Okay, Mayor and Councilmembers, you are live and live on YouTube. And TV 30 can count you in at seven o'clock.
TV 30 standing by. One minute. Thirty seconds. Okay. Here we go in five, four, three, two, one, and we're live.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council on Monday, February 22nd at 7:00 PM. The how to participate in the meeting can be found at the end of the agenda packet. And we're operating under the COVID rules. And later on, the city clerk will be telling everyone how you can participate in the public forum and the comment period. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carling?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody can be on mute and follow along. We have the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up is the item two, Proclamations and Presentations. And 2.1 is the Human Services Commission Annual Update. We have a staff report and the report, please.
Marty Sutton, you've been allowed to talk. Please unmute yourself.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor Warner and City Councilmembers. My name is Marty Sutton, and I am the Commissioner of the Human Services Commission. The Livermore Human Services Commission serves as an advisory body for the Human Services Grants Program, which in fiscal year 2019 to 2020, provided funding for critical safety net services to more than 5,868 Livermore community members. Safety net services such as food security and shelter crisis stabilization, senior and disability services are provided to Livermore residents. Additionally, these funded agencies have organizational missions that are consistent with the established city council goals and priorities as described in the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan. The Commission is currently funding $909,000 to 15 safety net providers and is in the process of reviewing applications for the years 2021 to 2022. The Commission receives this year 20 applications with a total request of approximately $1.3 million. Every grant cycle, the amount of grant requests the Human Services Commission receives far exceeds the amount of federal and local funds available, which makes it imperative for the city to set funding priorities for the housing and human services grants to help shape difficult funding decisions. This year, the Commission held a community outreach process that provided valuable information on social service needs from the perspectives of providers and clients. We learned that critical safety net services, such as affordable housing, continue to be a priority in our community, especially during the pandemic. We also learned that language access is a major barrier for many low-income families who need these services the most. Funding sources include federal home funds for rental assistance programs, affordable housing funds for unsheltered housing-related programs, and federal CDBG funds, which restrict public services to 15% of the entitlement, which is only $65,000, and the Social Opportunity Endowment Funds. The Commission would like to remind the city council that the Social Opportunity Endowment, which is a fund of negotiated development agreement contributions that has provided $80,000 per year in social services grants that are not covered by federal programs, will be exhausted in the next year. And this provides a critical service gap if additional funding sources are not identified. These funds go to public service providers for food access, senior assistance, and support for our disabled community. This grant cycle alone, these public service providers have applied for half a million dollars in critical funds to assist our community. Without these SOE funds, we will lose these critical services. This Commission recognizes that many of the needs identified in this process, from expanding homeless services to strengthening the mental health safety net to ensuring low-income families have the support they need to weather the COVID-19 pandemic, will take much more than this one grant program to fully address. And we hope that these grants will contribute to the goals of existing city initiatives such as the Subcommittee on Homelessness, Equity, and Inclusion Working Group. Thank you.
Bob, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you for the report and all the work you do. It's really a tough job sorting through everything and making the choices. And thanks for highlighting the funding gap. Do we have a suggestion as to what we're going to do about that? Maybe either from you or the city staff?
I think I believe Claudia is on the line to help with that answer.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers and the public. So staff is currently exploring other funding sources, either with the county or other state and federal funds that are coming through to address the COVID pandemic. So this will be continued. In addition, we're going to be reassessing our negotiations of SOE funds as different developments come online.
Okay, well, thank you. Any other council member? Oh, I see a council member Carling has got his head raised. Go ahead.
Yes, thanks for the report. You mentioned language access coming from the outreach process. I was curious, is there some specific examples where language access is prohibited or limited? And is it Spanish primarily, or are there other languages that we need to think about transcribing some of the materials into?
Well, I'm going to let Claudia answer some of the more specifics because she has the data. But we, as a commission, I will say, were very surprised by this. And we realized that it was a big issue, not just with the Hispanic community, but with other communities within Livermore. And so we've talked a lot about this as a commission, that this needs to be a priority, not only for the city, but also for our providers of social services, that they need to start thinking about making sure that all of their services are accessible to everyone. Claudia, do you have more specifics?
So it's not just materials from the city, but it's also from the providers as well.
Yes, yes.
Claudia, sorry, go ahead.
Sure. So, yes, within the Hispanic community, I believe that was the majority of the language access issue. We did have a community meeting in Spanish, and the feedback was that it's not specifically city information that is not accessible. It really is the service providers and the social services that the county provides. Things are either not translated, or there's just not staff available to assist, to help them and walk them through the process. The other part of accessibility that was also related to language was just having the technical knowledge to navigate with, you know, computers or on the phone to get access to a lot of online information. So we're going to be really assessing that. But we do have a little bit of our COVID grants from CDBG that we allotted to language accessibility. The second language that we're going to look into is Asian languages, specifically Chinese, it seems to be the one.
Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Kik?
So I know that having access to a computer might not be guaranteed, but in general, if you don't have a computer, more people are likely to have a phone. Have you looked into to see if these providers or the county resource websites are mobile accessible and mobile friendly? I know sometimes, you know, for example, our website, before we finish our update, isn't super mobile friendly. And so that could potentially increase access to tech without having to have access to a computer.
I will say that just from reading a lot of the grants that have come out for this that we're currently going through, a lot of the providers have been forced to make this an issue because, especially technology, because of COVID. And so that has been addressed in many of the applications we've got. But I know that Claudia, they've worked with, Claudia can talk more, but with homeless, they've worked on giving them phones that they can have access to and computers. One of the big issues has been with the libraries being shut down is that people don't have access to the internet and computers. But Claudia?
No, Chair Sutton, I think you've covered it, but I think you made a good point, Councilmember Kik. We are looking and working with the county to make sure that their social services are accessible. They did just relaunch their entire website, and it looks like they have made a lot of information available, and it is being translated. So I think now the next level is looking at our providers and really helping them build that capacity with staffing, have the language access with the staff specifically.
I will also just say one more thing on that, that I have noticed too in some of the applications, that providers are looking to services, outside services that they can use for translation, because it's not just the Hispanic community. There's other groups that need assistance with language.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe?
You're muted, Trish.
Of course I am. If I were ranking these issues, it might look something like not internet access, but digital access or connectivity issues along with language translations, starting with Spanish as being the primary language, but then other languages. What would be the next language and what would be the?
I believe it was proportion. But Claudia, what was the next one?
Correct, it was Mandarin.
Right. And if I were looking at percentages of the need for Spanish versus Mandarin, what would that end up being?
It would be majority Spanish.
So just, yeah.
Yeah.
So is that? Is the language issue something that we can solve as a city or work towards managing as a city using some of our volunteer assistance, say through, I just lost their name. The people that are working with us on homelessness?
City, sir?
Thank you, yes, that. Could that be of the help, or is there other, are there other community possibilities that we could work with or to help with this? Or is this something that really needs to be solved by city staff?
I think we need to do a little bit more research on what do we have and then identify what we need. We are, we are working with also our Public Information Officer to create some, something such as videos, because I think it's as simple as they may be able to get to the website, but then what do you do? They don't even know how to use the Google Translate. So having a video in Spanish that says, when you get to the website, this is what you do, and showing things like that. So I think we're just reassessing as a whole. And then we're also going to be reassessing our providers and really emphasizing to them the importance of having staff. So as they hire new staff and as we fund new programs, making sure that they are translating information, but also hiring staff that speak the languages that they need.
Okay, and then I noticed that affordable housing got mentioned, but not discussed because it's really hard. Is there? Do we want to have a discussion about how to think about that? Do you have any comments on that? You know, further comments other than, huh, need to work on this?
Well, I think housing and human services, the whole division as a whole, we're working together. So as we're doing it, your human services, we're doing it for housing also.
Okay, and I'm sorry, that didn't come out quite right. I didn't mean to, you know, that. What I really want to know is what we can do to help. So it's not that you guys aren't working, we know that, but what would the best thing we could do from your standpoint be as council?
I think right now you can be on standby and staff will let you know when we need your help and when we need your advocacy on specific things.
Okay, and thank you for letting me restate that.
I just want to just add on to that, that, you know, one of the things we've talked about as a commission is with COVID going on, is keeping people in their homes right now. And I think that also needs to be a high priority for city council, is to make sure that we don't have more homeless, especially families, and that we give our community their support. I know Pleasanton had tenant-based rental assistance. I believe they had half a million dollars, and they've already gone through it. So it's a, it's a lot, and I know staff is working with county and state to get money over to Livermore residents.
Are you done, Vice Mayor?
I am.
Okay, Councilmember Banano?
Yeah, real quick, two, two quick things. One is a comment. This is the first report I've gotten out, and thank you both for it very much. First report I've heard as a council member. The language access issue, I mean, it sounds like there's problems in a number of areas, but I'm surprised to hear and sort of disappointed to hear that the county is not doing a better job, at least providing resources that are accessible to Spanish speakers. Is that what I heard? Just.
We've been working with the county. They have now relaunched their website, and they have, in fact, translated information, and it seems to be more accessible. So we're going to continue to work with them to test their, their process and their systems online and give them feedback.
Okay, I think we should be good about giving them feedback, because it seems like the county of Alameda should be really good at providing information in Spanish at a minimum. And the second thing is the, I mentioned this at the last meeting, you have access to a wide range of people, and I expressed a concern at last meeting about trying to be sure, trying to be proactive about getting vaccines out to people that aren't necessarily mobile, aren't necessarily knowledgeable about how and where to get vaccines. I just think it's going to be, take a little bit of a village process to get vaccines out to both seniors and people who have other issues that might not allow them to either know about resources and get to them. So I'll just make that as a comment, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to respond to that, that our Public Information Officer actually has been working with Spectrum, Meals on Wheels, and they were able to include some inserts when they delivered some food, and so that was very successful. So I just want to share that. And then also, Alameda Healthcare for the Homeless has, was today at the creek, providing vaccines for unsheltered. So I think we're trying to do our best to do as many inserts, mailouts, or, you know, with our providers to get information out to our seniors and any other vulnerable populations.
Great, thank you. Thanks for.
Okay. Yeah, and I do have a comment or a question, which is just sort of sparked by what Councilmember Banano said. I'm wondering, would it be useful for the council to write a letter stating our request that we have better language facilities from the county?
I'll let Claudia handle that.
So as we start working with the county, again, we will let council know when we need your advocacy on specific.
Okay. All right, we're sitting back and waiting. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again for this really good work in the report. And I would say this, in my time on the council, this has been one of the more robust discussions of an annual report that I can remember. So it's good, and I think that's indicative of the good work and the importance of what you're doing. So I have a question for staff. I don't know which staff, but perhaps city manager. But how, how do we have this inform our goals and priorities? And, you know, at the time when we have to think about our budget allocation, what's, when's the next time that this comes back to us for action is the question?
Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, your city manager. As a part of your goal setting, would be very appropriate to consider things like this. You do have a briefing paper that'll be part of your goal-setting preparation that does touch on, you know, housing homelessness items related to the things we talked about this evening. So both the information that is in that report, as well as the discussion that happens at your goal-setting, would sort of inform us going forward as we develop our work program for the coming two years.
Okay, thank you. And at this point, I would like to see if we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, yes, we do. We have Pratik Gupta and Pratik. I'm enabling you to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you so much, Mayor, and my fellow residents. I just, I don't have a specific comment on the last subject. I just don't know the process. I recently moved to Livermore. I was going to apply for the advisory commissions that have available appointments, and I wanted to just mark my attendance here.
Okay, thank you. That's a different topic, but yeah, the process here is the public comment is on the agenda item per se. In Citizens Forum, people can speak on any topic that they wish, but thank you for your interest.
I apologize. I'll be, I'll be looking out for those comments as we move forward.
Sure, great. With that, any other comments from council or anyone? Again, thank you so much for what you do. It's really critical, you know, to our community. So next item is 2.2, a confirmation of advisory body appointments to the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission. We have the staff report on that, and proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is your city clerk, Marie Weber. Applicants for vacancies on advisory bodies are interviewed by a two-member subcommittee of the city council before being recommended for appointment by the full city council. On February 3rd, the subcommittee interviewed applicants for a vacancy on the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission and have submitted their recommendation for city council consideration and appointment. Tonight, the subcommittee recommends the city council confirm the advisory body appointment and direct the city clerk to schedule an individual meeting with the new member to administer the oath of office. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions from council on this or comments? Okay, I see none. Again, I would like to thank those who applied and the council for doing the interviews. And on this item, do we have any public comment?
Mayor, no, we do not.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm looking for a motion, I believe.
I'll move approval.
A second.
Sir.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Kik. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kik?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. Oh, I see Councilmember Kik, you have your hand up on this.
Nope, but sorry.
Okay, all right. Well, that passes unanimously. And again, congratulations to the people. And I want to thank all who did apply, and there will be other opportunities. With that, we'd like to now move to Citizens Forum. And in conformance with the Brown Act, no city council action can occur on items presented during Citizens Forum. And you can log into Zoom to provide the verbal public comment during the city council meeting. And comments are limited to three minutes per person. And the will conclude after 30 minutes, and if necessary, will reconvene at 9:30. So with that, would city clerk, could you explain the process for participating?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand as soon as the item you would like to speak begins. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record.
Okay, with that, again, I'd like to emphasize that the way this works is you can raise your hand in the Zoom meeting as soon as you know you want to make a comment, and then you'll be admitted in, in the order in which the hands are raised. So could we then have the first person who wants to comment in Citizens Forum? And I think you'll also be announcing who's up next after that, the next two after that, I believe.
Yes, sir. The first speaker will be Felicia Ziomac, followed by Jackie Cotta, followed by Kamal. And Felicia, we have enabled you to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Warner and City Councilmembers. My name is Felicia Ziomac. I live in Livermore and in the Tri-Valley, a total of about 35 years. I'm speaking up because of my serious concerns regarding the proposed airport development and its effect on noise levels, quality of life, and property values around the airport in Livermore and in the Tri-Valley as a whole. Back in 2005, 1,500 people packed a city council meeting to fight a new airport master plan that would have included lengthening runways, adding hangars, and bringing in more airport business. Well, this is like 2005 all over again. Per the Airport Commission's staff report dated February 8th, staff have entered into lease negotiations with Kaiser Air on a long-term, 35-year ground lease development agreement of the existing 45-acre parcel, which includes providing space for approximately six Kaiser Air corporate fleet aircraft, Boeing 737s, Cessna citations, and Gulfstream Fours, adding a 293,000-square-foot concrete apron, adding hangars, adding a terminal, adding a fuel storage facility, estimated to generate 1 million gallons of annual fuel flowage, and constructing a two-story office building. And constructing a two-story office building so they can house their corporate offices. Subsequent future possible developments would include construction of additional corporate and tea hangers. I'm not alone in my concerns. In the space of just over a week, a ground swell. Of Tri-Valley citizens has amassed over thirteen hundred signatures on a petition expressing serious concerns. We started leafleting affected residences to raise awareness and provide information on how to speak out about our concerns. Rob Guera, Kaiser Air's senior VP and chief pilot is quoted in The Independent. As stating this proposed development also fits within Livermore's long-term plans for the airfield. Where can I find more information about the long-term plans for the airfield to which Mr. Guera referred? And food for thought for the city council and planning commission? How will you accommodate fifteen hundred people at the planning commission meeting on March second at seven P M? And how will you accommodate fifteen hundred people at the city council meeting eventually when? This is being discussed and decided. When the county moves to a less restrictive COVID tier. Can we meet again in the Granada High School Gymnasium like we did in two thousand and five? Will you provide a ballot and mail in reply for all Tri-Valley citizens to cast? Their vote on this proposal when it reaches that point? Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackie Cotta, followed by Kamal, followed by A.J. Wright. And Ms. Cotta, you've been enabled to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. On March twenty-fourth, the CDC published the NVSS COVID nineteen. Which is known as Certificate of Vaccination I D A I Alert Number Two document instructing. Medical examiners, coroners and physicians to de-emphasize underlying causes of death. Also referred to as pre-existing conditions or core co-morbidities. By recording them in part two rather than part one of death certificates as quote. The underlying cause of death are expected to result in COVID nineteen being the underlying cause of death. More often than not, unquote. This was a major rule change for death certificate reporting from the CDC's two thousand and three. Coroner Handbook on Death Registration and Fetal Death Reporting and Physicians Handbook Handbook on Medical Certification. Certification of Death, which have instructed death reporting professionals nationwide to report underlying conditions in part one for the previous seventeen years. This single change resulted in a significant inflation of COVID nineteen fatalities by instructing that COVID nineteen be listed in part one. Of death certificates as a definitive cause of death regardless of conformity evidence. Rather than listed in part two as a contributor to death in the presence of pre-existing conditions. As would have been done using the two thousand and three guidelines. The research draws attention to this key distinction as it has led to a significant inflation in COVID fatality totals. By the researchers' estimates, COVID nineteen recorded fatalities are inflated nationwide by as much as sixteen hundred percent above. What they would have been had the CDC used the two thousand and three handbooks. Then on April fourteenth, the CDC adopted additional rules exclusive for COVID nineteen in violation of federal law. By outsourcing data collection rule development to the Council of State and Territorial Epidemiologists, CSTE. A nonprofit entity, again, without applying for oversight and opening opportunity for public scientific review. On April fifth, the CSTE published a position paper. Standardized Surveillance Case Definition and National Notification for two thousand and nineteen Novel Coronavirus Disease COVID nineteen. Listing five CDC employees as subject matter experts. This key document created new rules for counting probable cases as actual cases without definitive proof of infection. New rules for contact tracing allowing contact tracers to practice medicine without a license. And yet refuse to define new rules for ensuring the same person could not be counted multiple times as a new case. By enacting these new rules exclusively for COVID nineteen in violation of federal law. The research alleges that the CDC significantly inflated data that has been used by elected officials and public health officials. In conjunction with unproven projection models from the Institutes for Health Metrics and Evaluation. To justify extended closures for schools, places of worship, entertainment, small businesses. Leading to unprecedented emotional and economic hardships nationwide. A formal petition has been sent to the Department of Justice as well as all U.S. attorneys. Seeking an immediate grand jury investigations into these allegations. All data since last year suggests that COVID nineteen hysteria is part of an orchestrated coup against.
You've run out of time.
The next speaker is Kamal, followed by A.J. Wright, followed by Joe Higashi. And Kamal, we have enabled you to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak today. My name is Kamala Gavall and I am a resident of Pleasanton Meadows neighborhood, which is very close to Livermore Pleasanton boundary. We recently came across an article in the local newspaper, The Independent News. Regarding the proposed expansion of the Livermore Airport and allowing Kaiser Air to bring in seven thirty-sevens. As somebody living close to the airport, we are already concerned about the increasing plane noise in our neighborhood. And if this planned expansion goes ahead, it will make things a lot worse. This will adversely affect not only our quality of life due to a substantial increase in plane noise. But also will lead to an increase in air pollution. It also raises safety concerns with K to eight schools in the flight path. We check this if this is an isolated concern of a single household or a community at large. We started a change.org petition that Felicia earlier mentioned. And it has already amassed more than thirteen hundred signatures in just few days. All the activities related to this petition fall under the purview of L A C G, which is Livermore Action Airport Citizens Group. I understand that this airport expansion is not an agenda for today. So you can't really have a discussion person on this topic. I would like to request this to be added to one of the upcoming council meetings. So residents can get an opportunity to express their concerns before any action is taken in this regard. Thank you once again for your time and patience. Thank you.
The next speaker is A.J. Wright, followed by Joe Higashi, followed by Brian Canberra. And Mr. Wright, you've been enabled to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am the owner and operator of A.J.'s Bike Service LLC. As a pioneer in support for an ever-changing, growing bicycle community here in Livermore. My goal was to provide affordable service and positive service from home without a negative impact to my neighborhood community. I've been operating currently very similarly to a cottage industry. I've got restricted hours for pickup and drop off, which is all COVID compliant. I want to note, I will never have more than ten people coming during the hours of nine A M. to four P M. Now, I'm going to slightly overestimate that that number just to make sure I don't, you know, pass my quota for the day or whatnot. I just want to say, and on the rare occasion, I might have somebody come and drop off on the weekend. Whether it's for kind of emergency repair for commuting on Monday and whatnot. Now, I also have been keeping a work log every day to make sure I do not excess with these pickup and drop offs. And my services are appointment only. I don't allow for drop-in services by any means. And I want to note that my clients are very respectful and mindful. You know, I see cars speeding down the street, but they're not my customers, thankfully. You know, and I will be issuing notices to every customer moving forward. To basically tell them, you know, if if they are disrespectful and if they don't follow these rules, they're not going to get service. You know, because I want to have respect and trust with my neighbor. So. Obviously, I'm in the early incubation period of my business. I would like to move out eventually. But unfortunately, you know, with expensive rent, this is what has worked right now. Working from home, having people drop off to me and then have them pick up. So, you know, as you guys have seen with my petition, it's gotten over nine thousand. Signatures as of today, which was started six days ago. You know, I'm just trying to provide something good for the community here and I've got really, really low noise impact. Only thing I have that could be annoying is a compressor, but you know, it's quieter than a lawnmower. So. You know, I know that these are these are really trying and changing times and I simply started my business when I had no income or other option. You know, and I've taken my part in community service service and self-funded charity events to kind of further that positive support. So. You know, I'm just kind of calling on the council to, you know. See the city code and think about what we can come up with together as far as zoning and coding. Because I do work just like a cottage industry and I know it's a unique case because I'm the first bicycle repair guy here in town. So, but uh, but yeah, if unfortunately I had to change to be the one to drop off, it would unfortunately put me out of business. So I just want to say thank you guys for the time I have to present today. And I hope, you know, we can move forward and I can get back to work and service the community. So. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. I really appreciate it.
The next speaker is Joe Higashi, followed by Brian Canberra, followed by Sandra Chesterman. And Mr. Higashi, we have enabled you to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, hello. I'm also here in support of A.J.'s bike repair business, actually. It's interesting to follow him. I don't believe that home businesses should be restricted based on their type, but rather on explicit rules about impacts they're allowed to have in the neighborhood. For example, noise and traffic should have explicit limits, not assumptions based on business type. I find it quite ironic that we're dealing with a homeless problem while trying to kill off a business keeping a man in his home. That's all.
The next speaker is Brian Canberra, followed by Sandra Chesterman, followed by Kate Boyce. Mr. Canberra, you've been enabled to speak. Please unmute yourself. Mr. Canberra.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you very much. And good evening, council members. I'm here also to speak on behalf of A.J.'s Bike Shop. I actually live in the same neighborhood as A.J. I'm directly across the street from where he owns and operates his business. I'd like to speak in support of what he's doing because as as a member of the neighborhood for a little over three years now. I've never once been bothered by A.J. or his business or his practices that's where he works out of his home. I live directly across the street from him. I've seen his customers come by and I absolutely support all of the statements that he said earlier. They've all been extremely respectful and compliant with all of his requests and restrictions. And as someone who's living in the neighborhood with a very recent newborn child, I would immediately be bothered by anybody working with excessive noise. Or disturbances outside and we've had none of that, absolutely none of it. A.J. is extremely respectful and exceedingly quiet in his business. I too think it's unusual that somebody who's working from home. And trying to make ends meet during very difficult times for a lot of people is being forced into a situation where. He's essentially going to lose his business and be at risk of losing his home. This is a serious concern for me and I. I don't agree with how things have been handled and I hope that we can reach a resolution and that A.J. can resume his work as soon as possible. Again, you know, I live across the street from him, never once been bothered by his work and I think he should be allowed to continue without delay. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Sandra Chesterman, followed by Kate Boyce, followed by Jake. And Ms. Chesterman, you've been enabled to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for having me. And again, my name is Sandra Chesterman and I'm here in support of A.J. And what he does here in the community, not just as a at-home business. Which as we're in a pandemic, people are working from home and I don't see why his business is any different. It's not like he has a revolving. Door of customers coming in and out, you know, all hours of the day. This is his job and I don't understand why it's an issue. He has been very supportive in my charity work. I have a nonprofit foundation. My daughter was killed on her bicycle. By a drug driver when she was up at Chico State. And one of the things that I do is I promote bicycle safety and I also give out bicycles to members of the community. That can't afford them or a child had their bike stolen. And A.J. has reached out to me and is working with me. He assembles the bikes for me. So he's just really here for his community and I think it's time that we are here for him and help help him to. Be able to continue working out of his home. I myself, I found him because he worked on my bike and I was the only customer that was there. It's not like he has a whole bunch of customers coming in and out all at the same time. So I'm just hoping that you guys will let him continue his work from his home. But thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Kate Boyce, followed by Jake, followed by Pratik Gupta. And Ms. Boyce, we have enabled you to speak. Please unmute yourself.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Joe Boyce and today my wife Kate and I present our support for A.J.'s Bike Service. Kate and I were A.J.'s neighbors who lived directly across the street from his previous residential location. We wish to attest to the conduct of his daily operation and convey our experience as witnesses. Who watched him work hard to build his brand and make a positive impact on our neighborhood. To put it simply, he was a great neighbor when he lived by us and there were no disruptions to the neighborhood, no noise. In fact, on the contrary, he was a value add to the area. I first observed A.J. interacting with community members when he would jog down his driveway to help unload bikes from the back of vehicles, but. On more than one occasion, I saw him jog across the street to help elderly neighbors with unloading their vehicle or. Helping a kid who got a flat tire who was walking his bike home. These unbridled acts reflect A.J.'s character as a great neighbor. And they were consistently performed out of the kindness of his heart. They were not customers and these these acts were not for his own gain, but for the sake of the community. So while there are certain reasons to have local city regulations, like nobody wants to live next to. A home-based auto shop or smog shop or car wash that's running loud equipment all day. But there should be consideration for the spirit of the law. It's been thrilling to watch A.J. begin his journey as an entrepreneur and especially in this economic climate. His spirit, his work ethic and commitment to excellence should be celebrated and revered by our city. Especially during these challenging times, we urge our city leaders to view this circumstance with indulgence and. Allow A.J. to continue his normal operations as soon as possible. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jake, followed by Pratik Gupta, followed by Adrian Olson. Jake, you've been unable to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is John King. And I too applaud A.J.'s entrepreneurial spirit. I've known A.J. for more than ten years through my daughter. And he's always been an upstanding member of the community, very respectful. But more than that, or above and beyond that, I'm also a cyclist. I'm out on the road several times a week. And I also want to let the council know I appreciate that while all the repayments going on around town. I've noticed there's more and more bike lanes and we need A.J. to support the cyclists. He helps people with maintenance and repairs and gets them back out on the road so they're not driving cars and polluting. So yes, I am very much here in support of A.J. I'd like to see him continue working on my bicycle and everybody else's. He provides a valuable resource to the community. And as others have mentioned, it's it's wonderful that he's able to maintain his livelihood. While so many other avenues for employment and commerce are shut off during COVID. And just, you know, one other minor point, many of us walk around with iPhones. Let's let's not forget the origin of the iPhone started in a garage in Cupertino. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Pratik Gupta, followed by Adrian Olson. And Pratik, we have enabled you to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. I apologize about the previous time. My name is Pratik. I recently moved here two weeks ago. I lived in San Jose for last fourteen years. And the reason we came around Livermore is because my uncle moved here about three years ago. That's when we first started coming into the town. And ever since I fell in love with the downtown and the town feeling. And community that it has to offer. When it came for us to look for a new home in Bay area, we looked. No further than Livermore. We knew that's what we needed or wanted. Now we're here and I spend a lot of time in the city. Now we're here and we, I spend a lot of time in the city, working around from the coffee shops, you know, while we work from home. So I don't have any commute and I look at all the, things are happening with the outdoor businesses opening up. I wanted to throw my head, my name in the, for the advisory council, for the city asset management program. Given my history as a tech entrepreneur, I can help with few things. And I am working on my application to write out all the detailed plans. I'm looking forward to submitting it before 26th. And I'm looking forward to attending a lot more meetings as a resident. And I also, while I'm on the call, support AJ because I also like to bike and I was looking for somebody because I was about to take my bike to San Jose at the bike shop where I used to, you know, get it fixed. Now I will reach out to you, AJ. Thank you for being on the call and I appreciate it. That is my time.
The next speaker is Adrian Olson, followed by Tim Winters. And Ms. Olson, we have enabled you to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, and, and thank you very much. My name is Christopher Olson. I'm husband to Adrian Olson. And we live around the corner from AJ. And I can only say the best possible things about AJ, his bike service and, and the service that he provides to this community is, is real, it's honest, and it should be celebrated. I completely approve of his business. I see no downside whatsoever and it completely perplexes me that someone would try and limit someone else's ability work, especially in a trade that is so needed in today's day and age by somebody as, as straightforward and easy to work with as AJ. A great asset to our community, our neighborhood, and I will support AJ for sure. That said, that is my time and I thank you again for the opportunity to share.
And the final, the final speaker we have is Tim Winters. And Mr. Winters, you've been able to speak. Please unmute yourself.
I thank you for the time. My name is Tim Winters. I'm also here to support AJ and his bike service. I live just around the corner with my wife and just around the corner from AJ. And we've used his service multiple times for our bikes. He is an absolute joy to work with. And while we walk our dogs around the neighborhood down his street, we do not see any issues. I've never heard any problems. When he is working in his garage, you know, he's kind of everyone going by. We wave, we have a brief chat. He's just a joy to have in the neighborhood, brings nothing but positivity to the neighborhood. And what he does is a true value service for our community. That's it. Thank you for your time.
And that concludes the public comment.
Hey, thank you. And I just want to let people know that during citizens forum, as I mentioned at the beginning, because these were not agendized items, we won't be able to discuss it at the council. But however, we will have the opportunity when we get to item seven, which is matters initiated. And I will be addressing the AJ situation at that time. And that, you know, somewhere around the nine thirty, ten o'clock timeframe perhaps. But with that, closed citizens forum and now on to the consent calendar. So the is, are there, is there any public comment with respect to the consent calendar?
Mayor, no comment has been received.
Okay, I will then close the public comment on the consent calendar. Does, are there any comments from the council or can I have a motion? Vice Mayor Monroe.
I have a comment and then I can make a motion. I just wanted to note that we have a tranche of money coming in from the county working towards the tiny homes at Goodness Village at the Crossman's Church. And I just thought that was worth pointing out in, as being one of the good things that's happening in a difficult situation. So, and with that, if there's no other comments, I would be happy to make that motion.
So, okay, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kick. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carley?
Aye.
Councilmember Kick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Now on to item five, public hearings, five point one. Hearing to consider a downtown specific plan amendment regarding parking stall dimensions in structured parking. We have the staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor. It's Mark Roberts, your City Manager. And I'm going to introduce Steve Riley from our planning division who's going to give us our staff report on this item.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Warner and members of the City Council. Let's see, let me, I'm sorry, let me get to the start of it. There we go. This city initiated downtown specific plan amendment is to revise parking stall dimension standards for structured parking in the downtown core. This will help facilitate redevelopment of the core consistent with the approved downtown plan by increasing structured parking capacity in the downtown core. As part of the 2017 Downtown Steering Committee Public Engagement Program, the community identified parking as the highest priority to consider as the downtown plan moves forward. This amendment is to revise parking stall dimension standards for structured parking in the downtown specific plan core area only. The core plan area boundaries are shown on this slide. So if you can see my cursor, here's South Livermore Avenue. Here's First Streets. Here's the existing parking structure. Here's the I Street parking, approved parking garage that you'll hear later, you'll hear later tonight about that. And the L Street parking garage is here and Legacy Apartments is being constructed right here. So this amendment would cover all of those above-ground structured parking facilities as well as anything, any below-ground future parking structured facilities. Currently, all public and private structured parking spaces in the specific plan are required to be a minimum of eight and a half feet wide. Structured parking includes both above-ground parking garages and below-ground parking structures. This amendment will not impact parking space dimensions for on-street parking or surface parking lots. The proposed amendment will allow a maximum percentage of eight-foot-wide spaces in public and private structured parking in the core. This will apply to both standard and compact spaces. Staff is presenting two alternative recommendations for the City Council to consider this evening. The Plan Commission is recommending that up to 35% of these structured spaces can be eight feet wide. While the staff is recommending that up to 50% of these structured spaces can be eight feet wide. The remaining compact and standard spaces must be at least eight and a half feet wide. The length of parking spaces and the required number of parking spaces is not proposed to change and no other specific plan modifications are proposed. So as you can see on the slide, the, we have listed some justifications for this amendment. It increases parking capacity to implement the community's highest priority that came out of the downtown plan outreach, which is to provide sufficient parking. The approved downtown plan relies on existing and future structured parking to meet current and projected parking demand. This, the use of eight-foot stalls is consistent with other Bay Area and Tri-Valley cities such as Pleasanton, Dublin, Alameda, Hayward and Walnut Creek. For example, if the amendment was approved and implemented, it would allow increased parking capacity in the approved I Street and L Street parking garages as follows. If the Plan Commission recommendation of 35% is adopted, then an additional 38 spaces could be added to both garages cumulatively. If the staff recommendation of 50% is adopted, then an additional 51 spaces could be added to both garages cumulatively. These additional spaces would not require a major redesign or change the footprint of the garages. At an average construction cost of $65,000 per structured parking space, these additional spaces have significant value add to the public and to the city. Staff surveyed some parking space with dimensions in the core with the following findings. Public surface parking spaces on the Old Lucky site between Stockman's Park and L Street and along Veterans Way are nine feet wide. Livermore Avenue parallel on-street parking spaces are generally eight feet wide. However, these spaces are not constrained by adjacent parked cars like in a parking lot. So they may be perceived as wider, more comfortable spaces. Diagonal parking spaces on First Street are generally nine feet wide and diagonal parking spaces on J and K Street are generally nine and a half feet wide. So even if this amendment were approved, there would still be options to use wider parking spaces in the core if a downtown patron did not want to use an eight-foot-wide space. So we did survey a few other cities and as I'd mentioned earlier, Dublin, Pleasanton and Fremont allow up to 35 to 40% of their spaces to be eight feet wide. Alameda, Hayward, Berkeley and Walnut Creek allow up to 50% of parking spaces to be seven and a half or eight feet wide with some caveats. The numbers on this slide show the maximum percentage of parking spaces in the downtown core that could be eight feet wide if this amendment were approved compared to the total of all, all existing and approved parking spaces in the downtown core. So if the Plan Commission recommendation of 35% is approved, these spaces would total 21% of all the downtown core parking spaces. If the staff recommendation of 50% is approved, these eight-foot-wide spaces would total 30% of all the downtown core parking spaces. It should be noted that these are conservative estimates that assume all three public parking garages and the legacy apartments would fully utilize the maximum percentage of eight-foot-wide spaces allowed. If that does not happen, the 21% and 30% numbers above would decrease. So with that, the Plan Commission and staff recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution finding that the project is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. That the Council adopt a resolution adopting specific plan amendment 20-003, amending provisions of the downtown specific plan to allow up to 35%, which is the Plan Commission recommendation, or 50%, which is the staff recommendation of private and public structured parking spaces in the downtown core to be eight feet wide. And instruct staff to file a notice of exemption in accordance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. That concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions you may have.
See a lot of questions going up at this point. My inclination, if it's okay with people, is to go to public comment first before we get into questions. So with that, I'd like to, do we have any public comment on this?
Yes, sir.
Did we, do you take us through that?
The first speaker is James Hutchins, followed by Jackie Cotta. Mr. Hutchins, you've been unable to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening. I'm a resident of Livermore and I'm opposed to this proposal. I currently drive a full-size pickup and can I, I can speak from experience about the kind of problems I encounter with smaller parking spaces. The obvious one is just trying to fit my vehicle into the space. My older truck is 94 inches from mirror to mirror, namely it's two inches narrower than the proposed width. And new trucks are larger. The 2020 Chevy trucks are 96 and 97 inches wide at the mirrors and Ford trucks are an inch wider than that. That means that a 2020 Ford pickup with standard mirrors, not tow mirrors, is a couple inches wider than this space and it cannot even legally be parked there. In fact, due to the vehicle size, even parking in an eight and a half foot space is often difficult or impossible due to the neighboring vehicles being close to or even a bit over their lines. People look at where the tires are versus the line, not realizing that the mirrors took off farther. I've often driven through our current parking garage looking for a space and had to pass up most or all of the open spaces because I cannot safely fit my truck into them. The next issue is damage, this, that, that, the damage that this will cause. If I pull into a smaller space, getting in and out of my truck is hard without hitting my door against the car next to it. This change will cause a lot more door dings and even scrapes since turning into a narrower space is harder and it will make it more likely that contact will occur. One issue raised at the Planning Commission was getting people with smaller cars to park in smaller spaces. I can tell you from experience that everyone, including those with small cars, given the choice, will choose the larger space first since they want more room to get in and out of their vehicles and also to reduce the chance of damage to their vehicle. This means again that the large vehicles would be shut out. The Commissioner has also said that vehicles are getting smaller and this is not true. For the last four years, the size of vehicles has been consistently increasing. The percentage of light trucks sold in California has gone from 51% of all vehicles in 2017 to 62.5% in 2020, while small cars have gone from 25% in 2017 down to only 16% in 2020. The current trend is larger vehicles, not smaller. While I understand the desire to create a few more spaces at a low cost, this change will only add at most 2% to 3% more spaces, but at the driver's expense in time, in aggravation and in damage. And I will be one of them. And that is why I'm opposed to this change. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackie Cotta. Ms. Cotta, you've been unable to speak. Please unmute.
I'd like to say thank you very much. First off, I agree with Mr. Hutchins. First off, we're traditionally a ranching community with a lot of trucks and SUVs. I myself have a very large SUV and the parking spots do not allow for enough space for a truck or SUV to park at eight feet wide and enable the occupant to exit the vehicle easily. When I park in Walnut Creek and I am carrying along with me my disabled mother, I have to actually get her, I have to stop and have her get out of the vehicle before pulling into a parking spot because of the fact that we cannot open the doors to get out of the vehicle. And that causes aggravation for the people behind me who are trying to, who are waiting for us to get by. I don't understand why the city is trying to change the plans that were already agreed to. I hope that they're not trying to add private parking to the parking structures that were designated as being public parking because of the fact that they are only allowing 130 spots for the housing that they are planning on building on the corner. That's unacceptable. That was also never in the plans. So I'd like to understand what is the reason for trying to make the parking spaces smaller when it, we all know that there are a lot of SUVs and trucks in the city of Livermore. It makes absolutely no sense why you would try to make it uncomfortable and inconvenient and also preclude a majority of the cars and trucks that are in Livermore from being able to park in these new structures that we have been patiently waiting for. And not only that, participating in the design of the downtown area, why is it that you guys are trying to box out people from being able to park in the areas that we have been planning for? Thank you. I'd like an answer.
The next speaker is Jake. And Jake, you've been unable to speak.
Hi, this is Doris Watson and I'm just curious about a couple of questions. If you add more spaces, do you not have to add more handicap spaces? And was that taken into consideration that the percentage of handicap spaces will need to increase? I am also not in favor of the I am also not in favor of the narrower spaces for all of the same reasons that have already been mentioned by my neighbors before me. But I'm wondering if the math and the projections are actually accurate by the staff reporter who made no mention of additional ADA parking spaces as a result of increased spaces. So, which the ADA has to be a percentage of the total spaces, and that was not included in his report. I personally have ADA stickers and can park in those spaces, but I do not always have the need to do so. But if I were to use the downtown area for parking in my SUV, I would always go down there with my ADA stickers whether I needed them on that day or not. Thank you, and I look forward to your responses.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll bring it back to a closed public comment. And bring it back to the council for questions and comments. And I'd like to start with Councilmember Banano.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Warner. I just wanted to make a couple of comments for the record at this point. I was a planning commissioner at the time that this item was heard by the planning commission. And I have a new role now as a city council member, and I wanted to just make sure it was clear that I will approach this item as a council member with an open mind, and I'm prepared to hear any new information, all information and any new information provided by staff this evening as well as public comment, and will be able to participate in deliberations and decision-making on this item in my new role. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kick.
My original question was to clarify, an eight-foot space, is that what would be traditionally considered a compact space in other cities? Or is that considered a regular-sized space in other cities?
Councilmember Kick, an eight-foot wide space is generally considered a compact space in most cities. It does vary a little bit from city to city. But yeah, generally, it is considered a compact space if it's eight feet wide, or in some cases, seven and a half feet wide.
And then I would ask, I want to hear from the community member who asked, how does this affect ADA?
This would not impact ADA. We would still be required to provide a certain percentage of ADA spaces for the building code, just like we did before.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Sorry, I wanted to go back to the question about ADA because I wasn't sure what the answer was. Does that mean that if we increase the number of spaces in total by having more, more narrower spaces, the number of ADA goes up? Or is it by area? I'm a little unclear on that. And then I have another question.
Sorry, to clarify, yes, if we provide more spaces, we have to provide more ADA spaces based on a table that comes out of the code.
Okay. Right, that's, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. So could you talk a little bit about the cost of the garage and the cost per spaces? As depending on the different numbers of spaces that would result?
So we do estimate, as I'd mentioned in the presentation, that when we build structured parking, we spend on average around sixty-five thousand dollars per space. So that's sort of the average cost per space if you spread it over the whole structure. The cost of the entire structure, I don't have any information beyond, I think there's an item later this evening on your agenda for the I Street Garage, and I think it's thirteen or almost fourteen million dollar construction bid that you'll be considering later on. So that gives you a scale of how much it costs to build the I Street Garage.
So we can say that the spaces are anywhere, so if we said that a space is on the average of fifty thousand dollars, that would not be wrong, and a wider space might be as much as sixty thousand. I'm making those numbers up a little bit, but help me out here.
So the, the I think the, the average, the sixty-five thousand dollar average that I gave you per space in structured parking is an average, sort of regardless of the size of the space, the extra few inches here or there, I don't think is a big factor there. It's assuming there's a small, you know, difference between an eight-and-a-half or an eight-foot wide space. And in general, you'll get X amount of spaces in a structure, and on average, it's sixty-five thousand dollars a space, sort of. Whether I think it's an eight-and-a-half or an eight-foot space.
Okay, and, sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember, this is Paul Spence, your community development director. I was just going to mention that with that sixty-five thousand dollar space difference and looking at the number of spaces that we could fit in, as Steve noted in his presentation, there's a difference of thirteen spaces, depending on whether you have thirty-five percent or fifty percent. So thirteen spaces times sixty-five thousand is eight-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. That's the cost difference of those two.
All right, but the cost, the cost of each space is substantial regardless.
Okay, Councilmember Carley.
Yes, thanks. I wanted to respond or comment on a couple of comments from the public. Ms. Carter asked the reason for this. And I guess I'll give you what I think is the reason, and I'll ask Mr. Riley if I'm right. But if I recall, during the outreach with regard to the development of the downtown, the number one issue is parking. So I think this is the staff's, I think it's more than an attempt, but the reasoning behind the considering a smaller space is to increase the parking because of the demand from the public at large. Is that a fair assessment, Mr. Riley?
Yes, that is correct.
So to Ms. Carter, the reason we're doing this, or the reason we're even considering is because the public rated parking is the number one issue downtown, and we're looking at ways to increase the amount of parking. The other, the other point, I guess I'd like to think about is the size of some of these trucks. Certainly, obviously, a personal opinion or personal preferences to what you buy. Mr. Hutchins, as I think I heard him say, his truck is ninety-four inches. That certainly would not fit into an eight-foot spot, being ninety-six inches. But the rest of the spaces in the, in the garage are eight and a half. Is that right, Mr. Riley?
Yes, the, the remaining spaces in the garage, garages would be eight and a half feet wide.
That's a hundred and one inches. That's only a few inches bigger than Mr. Hutchins' truck. So I don't, I guess I don't quite understand. I mean, frankly, I don't see how he could park his truck in the I Street Garage if they're all a hundred percent, eight and a half feet wide. So I guess I really am struggling as to, I mean, we're talking about, based on your one slide, if we go with thirty-five percent coming, what was the recommendation coming out of the planning commission, then you're talking about twenty percent or twenty-one percent of all the downtown core parking being at, at eight feet. And eighty percent being at eight and a half or larger. Is that, is that another way to look at this?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, I guess, I guess at this point, I, I agree with staff. I mean, the public has demanded more parking. I think we and the staff are thinking about how we can provide that. I don't think it's unreasonable. I think the number of thirty-five percent recommended by the planning commission, which I think agrees with much of the other, the analysis that you've done at Dublin, Pleasanton, and Fremont allow between thirty-five and forty percent. I mean, in other cities, even Alameda, Hayward, Berkeley, and Walnut Creek are as, as low as seven and a half feet. So I think thirty-five percent to me seems like a reasonable compromise and addresses not only what the public wants in terms of more parking, but also still leaves eighty percent of the parking in the downtown core at eight and a half feet at a minimum. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kick.
Do we know, I mean, this would be approving a new ordinance, but as we were to re-stripe, would we be putting all the compacts together, or would they be spread out? I'm just imagining, you know, if someone knew, like, all the compacts are on the third row, I'm not even going to bother trying to park up there because it's not going to work for me to make it easier for people to understand where the parking is. Has that been discussed, or would that be for later?
The specific layout and design of where these eight-foot spaces would go is something we'd still need to work on and develop with our engineering team and consultants.
Would they be required to say the word "compact" in them, like some places have, to make it clear that this is a smaller space?
Yes, we would. I think we would work to identify them for the public so they understood that they were the more narrow spaces.
And this is, this is Paul Spence, your community development director. I would add that it is likely that some of them would be spread out because based on the length of a row, you might be able to fit one more space in if you had a couple of compact spaces.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, Councilmember Banano.
You're muted.
Thank you. Mr. Riley, could you just clarify, compact means two things, I believe. There's compact in with respect to length and compact with respect to width, I believe. And I think maybe you could just clarify, when we talk about compact, does it have to be in both dimensions, one dimension? Maybe just speak a little bit on that, and, and then I have another comment. Thanks.
Yeah, so when we, we have compact in our development coded as a defined dimension, both with width and length. So for example, in Livermore, eight by sixteen is a compact space. So with this amendment, we're not actually modifying the length of any of the spaces as strictly for width. And so this amendment would allow both standard and compact spaces to be eight feet wide. So there, a length of a compact space will main, will remain sixteen feet, and the length of a standard space will remain eighteen feet. But the width can be narrowed to eight feet for both types of spaces with this amendment.
So, so when would a, when would a space be marked as compact?
I would like, Bob, then, our acting city engineer, Bob, could you weigh in a little bit on that? How we would mark these eight-foot wide spaces if they are a standard length?
Right, that's the question.
We'll have to mark them as compact, I think, for the width because that is what the public is used to seeing. So it would be marked with a C for the narrow spaces.
Okay, that, thank you. That, that, so in, in either case, a change, the, the reduced length or the reduced width would both get the marking of see your compact. The only other thing I wanted to add, I don't have any other questions, but just comment that these are, whether it's the thirty-five or the fifty percent, it's up to. These can be changed up to those amounts, which, which gives staff, you know, some flexibility and means it only goes up to. So, and if it goes up to, it means you can also come back down if it, if it looks like it's not working out, or it looks like, you know, it's just, it's, it wasn't quite the right number, whatever number we go with, it can be brought back down from that. I believe that's true, that we're authorizing a number up to. So that, that was all I had for the moment. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
So pursuing this question of how we mark spaces and how we think about accommodating different kinds of vehicles, I am wondering about in the, the coverage spaces in particular, but just in general, if there's a way to think about these very large vehicles as well. I gotta say, I don't see as many of them as I used to. So anecdotally, means about as much as anecdotally usually does. Those numbers, the numbers of compact cars or smaller cars seems to be going up. But that doesn't mean that we don't have a lot of vehicles that aren't. Is there a way to, I mean, and, and I know that you, as part of, you know, that, that there are the nine-foot spaces and there's the nine-and-a-half-foot spaces. Is there a way to specifically direct people with large vehicles to those spaces? So that, you know, sort of in the same mode that Councilmember Kick said, can we group compact spaces together? Are there ways that we could manage size in that, in that way?
Yes, so this is Paul Spence, your community vote director. Councilmember, yes, Vice Mayor, sorry, yes, we could provide some information on the website or through signage if we want to do identify areas within the community, either, you know, on-street or in private lots that have larger spaces, for example.
Okay, Councilmember Kick.
Unless you had some comments, Mayor Warner, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure I understood some of this. That there are different sized spaces spread throughout the city that we're talking about. In essence, if we went up to the fifty percent, that's an additional eight-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars equivalent. And that's a significant amount of money with respect to our city's budget. And I think Councilmember Banano pointed out that it's an up to, that what we're talking about, in my understanding, is paint. And if there's an issue that develops over time, we can back down, back, come on back down. So I'm not sure that the larger number contains much risk. And I, but I do understand Councilmember Carling's point of view, but I'm not sure that it's, that it matters that much to try and save eight hundred, you know, I think it's worth trying to save some money here. But with that, those are my thoughts at the moment. But with that, if if there are no more comments, so we can entertain a motion.
I would like to motion that we move forward with staff recommendation at fifty percent because I think we have been talking a lot about climate action and the importance of trying to balance climate action while we are also going forward addressing public needs like parking. And like you said, this is just paint. We're not investing in a building. We can walk this back if we need to. I, I think it would be a, a cost-effective way to meet the public's needs without taking up valuable real estate in our community.
Okay, is there a second? I see, Vice Mayor Monroe, you have your hand up.
Figure that's the only way I'm going to get a second in here. So yes, I'd like to second that for, for similar reasons. And I would add that the, for me, the cost is a significant factor. I was shocked the first time I realized how much a parking space in a garage costs. I continue to be shocked and continue to want to point it out that we're all paying for this. We're all paying for the, the privilege of parking. So I take it pretty seriously.
Okay, so this has been moved and seconded. I see Councilmember Carling, you have your hand up. So now we're into the discussion on the motion.
Right, how, how is it decided? Whether we go up as, as you pointed out, it's up to. So how is it decided? How will it be decided? How will it be decided? What percent we go up to? How's that decision made?
I think that would go back to Paul Spence.
So we would, uh, absent any additional specific direction, we would look to maximize parking capacity up to the fifty percent number if that was what was voted on, for example. In some cases, we might only hit forty-five percent because of the layout of the aisles or other factors, but we would go as far as we could without going above that number.
Would we hear about it again or would you just, these are decisions that you'll make?
We would look to your direction this evening, uh, to identify a percentage number. And then we would look to implement and maximize up to that number.
Okay.
Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, I just want to add briefly that this applies to public and private structured parking. So I don't know quite, I I to your question, Councilmember Carling, I don't quite know how it would be handled for the private structure, but I assume that the developers will will make that choice. So it's not only a city decision, if if I'm correct.
Correct. It's it's not a requirement either. So a private developer could choose not to go up to that percentage.
Right. Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
No.
Councilmember K.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
All right. And, uh, it would be, so it passes four to one. And I do think we want to see the plan when it comes back. If if at a minimum for informational item, when do you think you'll have that figured out?
So we we have, uh, rough calculations, as Steve pointed out in his presentation this evening, for each of the I and L Street garages, uh, with the additional percentages. And, uh, we would finalize, uh, the striping plan, uh, over the next month or so with, uh, with the contractor.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, we're, I think we're done with this item, but Councilmember Kick, do you have your hand up?
Yes, um, I was like meant to say this in my motion, but just, you know, recognizing that we could, um, do the best we could to direct people so they clearly understand where they may fit well and where they may not.
Okay, then we can deal with that later as well. Okay. So with that, we're on to, um, matters for consideration and I think, let me just see, there was a request that we, uh, reverse items, uh, six, one and six, two. Because, uh, Mark Roberts lost internet connection. We want to give him more time to, uh, give his report.
Honorable Mayor.
Oh, you're here. Okay.
I have been able to reestablish a connection, so I appreciate, uh, that flexibility, but I am prepared to move forward to six point one if you'd like to do it in proper order.
Well, let's do it.
All right. Give me just a moment, um, to pull up my PowerPoint here. All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor. It's Mark Roberts, your city manager and your director of emergency services with your, um, report, um, this meeting, um, on our update of COVID nineteen emergency. I wanted to start off, um, my report this evening noting that earlier today, the President of the United States directed that, uh, flags flown on any public buildings and grounds be flown at half-staff beginning today and through the end of the week on Friday at sunset in honor of the more than five hundred thousand Americans who have died, um, from COVID nineteen or complications from COVID nineteen. So the first stat this evening is a grim milestone that the entire nation has crossed over and that is a dramatic number. And it has led to a couple of macro trends. One is that life expectancy in the United States has dropped, um, uh, over a year for both men and women. Um, and that's an extremely rare thing for that to happen during any given year. Over time, uh, life expectancy in the United States since World War Two, um, has consistently increased. So the numbers are large enough to actually impact macro trends as well as impact, um, local communities as well. And with that, uh, notice of sort of where we have been in the past year, we are making some very positive progress. So as you can see from this graph, um, you can see that in December, we had our sharpest and highest peak, um, at the county level. In January, the city actually had its highest peak overall of number of cases per day on the seven-day rolling average. Um, and since that time, um, the descent has been, uh, consistent first dramatic in January and now very consistent, um, through, uh, February. So very, very good news on the numbers, um, overall. So our cumulative cases of COVID nineteen, um, that have been confirmed in Livermore are three thousand nine hundred and seventy-four. But the good news part of that is our seven-day rolling average has dropped to eight point three five. Um, and that's as of the latest data from the county's website as of today, um, actually reported for, um, the twentieth. And so, um, you'll remember that we had been dropping through the teens. Um, we were just under ten the last time we spoke, uh, two weeks ago, and now we are at eight point three five. At, uh, at the county level, the number of cases per hundred thousand population per day on a seven-day rolling average is a little higher at the twelve point six. But this actually is from February sixth data, this data that is reported to the state of California. The state only updates that about every week and it trails by about a week. So these numbers here are a couple of weeks old. So the the, uh, most recent data from the county on the county's website notices that they are also, um, below, uh, ten cases, uh, per hundred thousand. So from that perspective, um, a major milestone. So our next big, uh, upcoming change will be is when the county number gets to seven or below new cases per day on a seven-day rolling average and holds there for a two-week period, um, we'll be eligible to move into the red tier. And the red tier, of course, uh, has a number of additional flexibilities, um, on our road back to fully reopening the economy. Notable among them are indoor activities are allowed to be more intensive, uh, for retail. Um, and restaurants are allowed to begin indoor operations. So that's a milestone that, um, we're predicting to happen, uh, in early March here in Alameda County. If each of the trends holds, so far it appears that those trends are pretty consistent, but as we continue to move forward, further progress, uh, is more difficult and requires a significant amount of continued participation by everyone to keep those numbers low. On the testing, uh, front, um, we have, uh, now conducted almost thirty-one thousand tests at the Alameda County, uh, fairgrounds, um, and the city, uh, health urgent care, the testing site located here in Livermore in the Los Pecius College parking lot has been almost sixteen hundred cases, um, where we have, uh, conducted those tests, uh, tests locally. On the vaccine front, um, Livermore, uh, has, uh, administered or there have been, uh, doses administered to Livermore residents, more than thirteen thousand first doses have administered to Livermore residents and, uh, more than almost thirty-eight hundred doses, uh, second doses. So, um, we are continuing to make forward progress here, um, in vaccinating the overall community. Of course, starting with, um, those in congregate care situations and those who are healthcare providers. This, uh, last week, uh, we transitioned over into, uh, adding additional folks to that. At the, uh, Alameda County, um, site it, uh, that is located at the Coliseum. That is actually a FEMA or federally, um, sourced site. We are now vaccinating educators and the school district notes that over three hundred of their teaching staff have either received their first dose or have a firm commitment in the next week to receive their first dose. So that is very good news, uh, on our path to begin to have all of those staff be, uh, fully vaccinated so we can get our schools back open. Um, the school district is not, uh, yet settled on a date. But, uh, it is certainly, uh, before the end of this school year, um, and we're looking forward to that. In addition to educators, our public safety staff, all of the folks in our police department now, um, are eligible to be vaccinated. Um, and a few dozen of them have already received their, uh, first vaccines at the Alameda County site at the Emergency Operations Center in Dublin. So really good progress across the board on that. And, uh, I did want to follow up with, um, you know, some quick updates on the fairgrounds site there. Currently, uh, that we do, they do have essentially the, uh, at the fairgrounds, a large-scale drive-through site. Um, and that, of course, is a partnership between the county, Stanford, uh, Valley Care and Sutter Health. And at the fairground site, they're currently vaccinating healthcare workers and residents sixty-five and older. But, uh, at the Oakland Coliseum site, they have moved on because it is a federal facility to, uh, vaccinating education and childcare, uh, workers as well as emergency service and food and agriculture services. So, uh, we expect that the Alameda County site at the fairgrounds will move on to that in the coming week or ten days. And we'll move forward from there. Council directed that staff, uh, do additional outreach to our special needs populations, and we've been working on that in the past few, uh, weeks. You heard a little earlier that we have coordinated with Meals on Wheels, um, to have their volunteers distribute flyers. And they out, uh, in addition, um, they've surveyed all of their clients and most of them, of course, are homebound seniors to gauge who needs, uh, needed help. And they reported that many of their homebound seniors have already received at least their first dose. Um, and that the county is coordinating with service providers and has provided, uh, Arbor Vista and Vineyard Departments to have, uh, vaccine clinics at their facilities. And, um, we will continue to work with all of our nonprofit providers to make sure that our most vulnerable populations get special outreach, um, that we coordinate with the county. You also heard earlier today that the county had reached out to our homeless populations in vaccinating, uh, providing first vaccination shots to a number of our homeless, um, folks who are, um, still unhoused as well as those who are taking advantage of the various, uh, programs we have under Project Room Key. The council authorized the e-gift certificate program several weeks now, and it launched on Sunday, February seventh. And you can see there, uh, some pretty amazing stats. You'll remember that that program is, if a customer buys a forty-dollar gift certificate, the city funds a fifteen-dollar incentive so that they get essentially fifty-five dollars of buying power. If a customer buys a seventy-five-dollar gift certificate to a participating business, the city funds an additional twenty-five-dollar gift certificate. So you can see that we have almost twenty-four hundred gifts, uh, certificates that have been sold. Getting close to now five hundred of those redeemed. More than a hundred thousand dollars have been pumped into our, uh, local, uh, business owners' pockets. And we've used just over a third of the total dollars that we've set aside, uh, for that program. Uh, Alameda County, uh, has also pledged twenty thousand dollars and is working through the final stages of bringing that money online. But we are not essentially holding back on letting, uh, county businesses participate in that. We're floating that for a bit as we, uh, make sure that both the nearby county businesses and all of our city businesses are able to participate. Um, we have eighty participating businesses, um, in, uh, Livermore. And, uh, with with the bulk of those either being restaurants or retail shops. And you can see that there's quite a range across the entire spectrum of our small local businesses. So again, the, we are about a third of the way through our overall programs for our city funding. So we do continue to have, uh, significant resources there. So I'd certainly encourage anybody who has an interest in, uh, supporting our local businesses to, uh, essentially buy one of these e-gift certificates. The dollars go immediately into the local businesses', uh, pockets at that moment and you're free to, uh, utilize that gift certificate at a time that suits you. And with that, um, available for any questions.
Okay, I think before we go to, uh, questions, uh, do we have any, uh, public comment on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, how many?
Um, right now, we just have one, which is Jackie Cotta, and I'm enabling her to speak. And Ms. Cotta, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Uh, once again, the Centers of Disease Control, a private institution, uh, is preventing the, they stands to accused of violating federal law by inflating coronavirus fatality numbers, according to stunning information obtained by the National File. The CDC illegally inflated the COVID fatality numbers by at least sixteen hundred percent as the twenty-twenty presidential election played out. According to a study published by the Public Health Initiative of the Institute for Pure and Applied Knowledge, the study COVID nineteen data collection, quote, morbidity and federal law, a historical retrospective, was authored by Henry Ely, Michael Unboy, Daniel Chong, John Nowicki, Monica Seva, Sandeep Gupta, David White, James Jordan, Daniel Simone, and Paul Anderson. The study is a twenty-five pages long with over one hundred citations. However, the main points can be summarized. A major point is that testing inaccuracies and unreliability combined with unscientific procedures and methods resulted in demonstrably massive false positive spikes. The CDC is now legally requiring Americans to wear face masks on all public transportation as globalists try to push the concept of double masking on the populace. Since the election, the World He- Health Organization admits that PCR tests are not totally reliable on the first try and the second test might be needed. This corresponds with the CDC's quiet admission that it blended viral and antibody test results for its case numbers and that people can test positive on an antibody test if they have antibodies from a family of viruses that cause a common cold. Hospitals in Florida had so many accuracy complications that Orlando Health, Orlando, Orlando Health had to admit that its ninety-four percent positivity rate got recorded at, excuse me, its nine point four percent positivity rate got recorded at ninety-eight percent. There are also profound legal implications raised by the study that needed to be dealt with in the courts around the country if America is to ever be free again. The data you've been spoon-fed by the CDC for a year raises serious legal issues. Much like the twenty-twenty election, massive changes in rules for reporting and collecting data were instituted exclusively for COVID, which resulted in sixteen hundred percent inflated numbers of fatalities. Once again, I also want to remind you that it is unlawful for you to require someone to wear a mask. Your mask fines are in violation of California Business and Profession Code two zero five two. And I would like to respectfully request that you do away with them. Thank you.
Okay.
We do have one more, uh, Rozzy Hasney. And we have enabled, uh, excuse me, enabled you to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me, Honorable Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Honorable Mayor, honorable council members, just a quick reminder, I wasn't going to make a comment really quick, but I just wanted to comment on the city manager's, uh, presentation there that as part of the Fitness and Wellness Coalition here in Livermore in the Tri-Valley, we're also excited as we move into the red tier that we'll be allowed to operate indoors. Just a point of note for all of you guys that, uh, our businesses haven't been able to operate indoors for the better part of the whole year, only about, you know, less than three weeks for the whole, you know, pandemic year. So we're excited about that opportunity. And as we move forwards, we'd, uh, the coalition would definitely like to be a part of making Livermore, uh, specifically well and healthy better. So we look forward to that. And I just, just a point of note that as we move to the red tier, fitness and wellness is a big part of that as well. Uh, as you know, you have many facilities there in Livermore that support the health of the community. And, uh, we'd like to continue to do so. Thank you, guys.
And that concludes the, uh, public comment.
Okay, so we're, uh, closed public comment. Okay, so we're closed public comment period. Councilmember Kick.
I just had a question, Mark Roberts. On the data where it says how many vaccines have been given, is that coming from like the county site? And that's who's from Livermore has got it, or is it from Kaiser, or is it all together?
The information is being gathered from the county site. And all providers that provide a vaccine are required to request a city of residence as a part of that. And we generally could get pretty good compliance on that request. And then that, the providers throughout the county and beyond are actually then required to share that data with the originating county. So the data is coming from the county website, and they are the aggregator. And then that information is also passed on up through the change of the state.
Awesome, thank you for clarifying.
Councilmember Banana.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really appreciate the follow-up and the update on the outreach being done to some of our more vulnerable and perhaps less mobile community members. And it's great to see our service, service organization partners, as always, stepping up to help out with that. That was really great to hear. And I also learned, I don't know, I've never seen it defined on any of your charts, Mr. Roberts, but the HPI acronym, HPI, I learned, stands for Healthy Place Index, I believe, in case anybody was wondering. HPI is Healthy Place Index. I don't know really what it, what it means more precisely, but I do know what the acronym now means. Thanks.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe.
I wasn't sure which of us got our hands up first, so.
Well, my little chart says you did.
All right, then. I, I, I wanted to, once again, just appreciate the very clear PowerPoint and the layout of where we are, what's going on with taking care of people with regards to testing and vaccines and our most vulnerable population. And then what's going on with businesses. It's really puts together where we are at this point in time as we approach almost a year out, out, under, under pandemic in, in very clear perspective. I also really appreciated your starting with where, with the fact that we're at five hundred thousand people dead across the country. And the idea that we, we will take some time to mourn that that's where we are. Jumping from that to the gift program. I'm delighted to see that it's going well. It looks to me like we're only about a third of the way there. We have another two-thirds that we could spend, so I just wanted to encourage people to use it. I went out and did that. I have cookies, dinner. I've got some other things coming up. Pretty easy to use. Go forth and spend money. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Carley.
Yes, thanks. I wanted to follow up on what the Vice Mayor was asking about, Mr. City Manager. And I just, I don't know whether you have a sense or not, but oftentimes people, you know, participate in these programs pretty quickly upfront, and then it tapers off. Do you see, what do you, do you see any trend with regard to the e-gift program? And if it's tapering off, is there, is there a way that we can, I don't know, advertise, promote it, continue to promote it to get people aware that it's still available?
Well, absolutely. We can certainly continue to put that out on our social media. We did get a, a big burst right at the very beginning. But since then, the activity has been pretty consistent. You know, it, it is the twenty-second of February, and the program only went live on the seventh. We're also finding that some businesses are very effectively marketing it to their own customers. So the place to look for business, of course, is always with people who've done business with before you. So we've noted that a number of our fitness partners, restaurants, some of our downtown retailers have all reached out to their own mailing lists and have driven some demand that way. And so I know Livermore Downtown Incorporated is working with businesses to encourage them to use all the tricks that they have to reach out to people who care about their particular business. And we will continue, continue to use our mechanism. I believe we're going to also be adding some banners downtown to remind people of this. So as people are just in the area, they'll see those. So we still do have a, a few items that we are going to roll out over the next few weeks. But so far, we're very pleased that, you know, we're a third of the way through the total dollars in, in about fourteen days. And so at this pace, even if we just maintain a relatively even pace, we'd have about six weeks of the program funded, which is a really nice period of time. You know, we were worried about two, two different ends of the spectrum. One, nobody would play, or the other is that everyone would play, and then day two, we'd be out. We appear to be comfortably in the middle. We seem to have sized our level of support here appropriately for the demand. And so we'll keep an eye on this, and we'll certainly bring back an update in, at our next meeting so that you guys can keep an eye on this as well.
Great, thank you for that. I, I appreciate all the effort that you're going to, to continue to promote the program. The other thing that I was wondering about is, and I know that we asked for an update, maybe I did, about the e-gift certificate program, but I was wondering, we also allocated some rental assistance money and so on. And I wondered if the next meeting, if you could bring us up to date on those other categories that we had approved a few meetings ago, just to get sense of where we are on that.
Yes, and I'll give you a, a little bit of a teaser here. That the rental assistance program, as you might imagine, is a much more complicated program dealing with landlord and renter relations and sort of stepping into that and understanding all of the documentation that we would need. And so we've been working away on that program as well. And we expect by the time I bring the update back at our next meeting, we'll have some folks that will have participated in the program. But the, but the ramp-up time on that one was longer, and we did anticipate that. But we're working through all of that to make sure that when we do finally have the completed program here, that it works for both landlords and tenants. That was the point, obviously, because we have to have both of those groups participating in this. So I expect to be able to bring back some good news at our next thing, at our next meeting. And we'll also bring you an update on the various other programs that you have previously authorized, including those that are, that are sort of nearing their completion. Because you'll remember, we've, we've had several of these programs over the past six months. And so I'll bring back a more comprehensive status on all of them.
That would be great, thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Banana.
Yeah, thanks. I thought I'd just add a little bit to what Mr. Roberts said about the e-gift program. I attended the LDI as liaison, I attended the LDI meeting last Wednesday. And their executive director, Rochelle Stedencore, said, this has actually only been a soft opening. They, they have not started from the LDI standpoint, they have not really hit the marketing hard. They have a whole program and set aside some funds to do a much stronger marketing. So they consider what we've done so far only the soft opening. So I thought I'd just add that to what Mr. Robert said also.
Okay. Thank you. I've got a, I wanted to say thank you for the report. And as good as always, and always liked the view charts. The, and I was going to ask, as Councilmember Carley did, you know, what about the rental assistance program? But I'll go one further and say, any other ideas in the pipeline? And, you know, what, what's next? And have we been looking around at other cities? And are there any programs out there that they're trying that we haven't tried? So I would ask that, you know, it's this, you know, what, what have you done for me lately kind of question? But just want to encourage you to do that.
Very good, Honorable Mayor. My next report will bring back a little bit of a view around the Tri-Valley, the county, and, and the larger area as to programs and sort of comparing sort of what we've done to that. So I can see several of my staff being very excited just as we speak here and being able to look at that comprehensive look out there. But the, the slightly longer answer is that's where a number of these ideas originally came from, by trying to do best practices around listening to our local residents and businesses. So we certainly can bring back what we have done and what else is potentially out there.
Okay, well, well, thank you. I don't see any other comments on this item. And before we go to six dot two, let's take a ten-minute break. And then we'll do the garage and then do the, the final items in their agenda. So we'll be back at, let's say, nine, ten, a nice round number.
Mayor Warner, when you're ready, we can do another countdown.
Okay, I don't see a council member kick back yet. He's got another minute. Oh, there we go. So we we can start now countdown.
Great standby. In five, four, three, two, one, and we're left.
Hey, welcome back, everyone. We're now on to item six point two. A resolution awarding and authorizing execution of an agreement to build the I Street Garage. Can we have the SAF report, please?
Honorable mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. Your staff is very pleased this evening to present for your consideration a contract to build the I Street Garage and expanding to your current downtown parking structure. And Assistant City Engineer Joel Waxdeck is going to lead us through the item.
Thank you. Let me bring it up. See, it's not coming up. Try a new share. It says I'm sharing screen. Can you can you see that?
We see, we see a blank screen, Joel.
You need to double click sometimes.
Okay.
On the it'll ask you if you want to share and then you have to confirm.
Right.
There you go.
Oh, you saw it. Okay, I'm sorry.
No. Now it says we're viewing your screen. But it's blank.
Okay.
Marie, is it possible for you to share your screen with the presentation?
Yes.
All right, Joel, why don't you unshare at the moment and you can lead Marie through your presentation. She'll go ahead and click through the item.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for having that available. Good evening, Mayor Warner and members of City Council. I'm Joel Waxdeck, the Assistant City Engineer. And tonight I'm going to provide an overview of the I Street Garage project and recommend the council award a construction contract to rebellion contracting. And award a construction management contract to consolidated engineering laboratories. The I Street Garage helps implement the downtown plan that was approved by council in January two thousand and eighteen. The approved plan includes additional parking on the northwest side of the existing Livermore Valley Parking Garage located at I Street and Railroad Avenue, the I Street Garage. An additional parking at the southwest corner of the Livermore Village site, the L Street Garage. City Council directed staff to maintain the existing parking supply during all phases of downtown development. In addition, new parking supply needs to be provided to support new development. The I Street Garage will help the city meet these objectives. I get that. Get the next slide, please. The new I Street Garage will be an extension on the northwest side of the existing garage. Will provide three levels of parking and connect to the existing garage on all three levels. I Street itself will be reconstructed landscaped. And it will provide exit and entrance into the garage, a right turn out onto Railroad Avenue and right turn in from Railroad Avenue. Access into the I Street Garage will also be provided from Railroad Avenue through the current entrance to the Livermore Valley Parking Garage. Cars can come on in and circle around and get into the I Street Garage and on all three levels. On the west side of the project, a paved ten foot wide trail will be constructed between the garage and the intersection of Railroad Avenue and North Livermore Avenue. This ten foot wide trail will also connect to the pedestrian trail bridge over Livermore Avenue. Next slide, please. This is the level one plan. It shows a little more detail of the entrance into the garage and the connection with the existing garage. You can see when you come in the garage, if you turn left, you slope downwards a couple feet below existing ground surface up to the bottom level there. And there's storage, city storage also on that level. And next slide, please. This is a level two slide, a level two plan. And it shows the general circulation, two way circulation through the garage. It also shows that between the two bays, there's a pedestrian path that connects them towards the middle. And then there's going to also be a pedestrian path between the new garage extension and and the existing garage. Next. This is the top level plan. Again, you can see the connection to the existing top level of the garage. Existing garage and then the top level itself covers about half of the garage. Ends over on the left side and you can see the stairwell tower on the southwest corner. Next, please. This is the south elevation of the garage. It's more showing the structure itself, not the colors. The colors will be matching the existing garage. But this gives an idea of the shape of the the I Street Garage. You can see the entrance from I Street on the right hand side. And the sheer wall panels in the middle. And the stair tower on the left hand side, which is the west side over by North Livermore Avenue. Next, please. This is the north elevation that you'd see from the railroad tracks. On the left hand side is the existing garage. And on the right hand side would be North Livermore Avenue. Next, please. This would be the view from North Livermore Avenue. You'd be looking up the slope, of course, at it. And you can see the stairwell tower on the south side, on the right side. Next, please. So based on your earlier decision, the garage could have up to two hundred and eighty spaces. There are twelve of them will be EV chargers. Garage this size between two hundred and three hundred spaces need seven accessible stalls per code. So three of them will be in the I Street structure. We're adding four to the existing garage all on the ground floor. We're going to add twenty six bike lockers west of the existing garage in the ace drop off area. It was considered the best area for these lockers. If I get next slide, please. We're going to replace the sewer trunk line on I Street and replace where it goes under the tracks. The sewer is probably about a hundred years old and need a replacement. There's landscaping and pedestrian pathways as we've discussed. There's going to be stormwater treatment with bio retention planters for all of the paved areas. Next, please. Parking stall technology is going to be installed in the new garage and in the existing garage. The photos at the bottom show the type of signboards that'll be used. Basically, when you go into a section of the garage, you'll be told how many spaces are available. The new garage will also have a security system with video cameras and recorder. And the security system in the existing garage will be replaced and upgraded. Next, please. Six bids were received that range from thirteen point two five million to fifteen point six million. These were centered around the engineer's estimate of fourteen million dollars. Rebellion contracting was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder there from El Dorado Hills. The recommended action tonight is to adopt a resolution awarding and authorizing the execution of a construction agreement with rebellion contracting. The schedule is to begin in April of this year and to have the garage ready by April of two thousand and twenty two. That concludes the presentation. And staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir. We have Jackie Cotta and we're enabling her to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Waxdeck. That was a very good presentation. I find it very interesting that Mr. Carleen made a comment quite sarcastically that the city has requested that they want more parking. And my question was, is that why is the city deciding to change the plans that have been approved by the citizens? When we went to outreach, we already knew exactly how many parking spaces and we voted on them. And they were approved by the citizens. But now we have a city council that professes to be equitable and inclusive. However, makes a decision that precludes people from having SUVs and trucks from parking in specific parking places. So it is nor nor is it equitable and it is not inclusive because you are preventing people from parking in specific parking places. Why not make it inclusive to everyone by making every parking space the same size? It's very curious to me that you would use your some sort of, you know, idea of global warming as an excuse to push through your pushing someone into a smaller compact car. That's not going to happen. Like I said, this is a traditional ranching town and a lot of families have SUVs in this town. And when you park in a parking space that's eight feet wide, it makes it very difficult for someone and their passengers to get in and out of a vehicle. And it also makes it very difficult for them to actually park the vehicle. So I would request that you reassess the situation. And also in this new plan that you would actually think about everyone and make it more inclusive to the citizens of Livermore. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
No, sir. That was the only speaker.
Okay, and what we're talking about the item six point two is whether or not to build the I Street Garage. So, okay, with that, I would like to see council member kick as they hand up.
Yeah, so the the plan has a trail behind. Is that, where does that trail go? And is it part of any other, does it align with any other active transportation plans that we have going forward? Tell me a little bit more about the trail, I guess, is my, it's my request.
Council member kick, this is Joel. Yeah, that's ultimately the the goal is that that's part of the Iron Horse Trail. And the goal is to, you know, generally along the railroad tracks to go from the the west side of Livermore to the east side. So with this project, there'll be a nice connection out to Railroad Avenue as you come over that. So the function of it will be enhanced a little bit, but the ultimate goal is to find a way. And it's a tricky area there. But the the goal is to find a way to get it through all the way over to Junction, you know, from from where it comes over North Livermore. So that, that's what we're working on.
And then this is just a piece of it, obviously. What what are some other pieces about on this trail project? That we should maybe prioritize moving forward if we would like this trail to be consistent and and get from junction to the other side.
Could I, could I suggest that we stick to the garage?
Yes, sorry. We'll stick to the garage. I was just clarifying about the trail. Where does it go? I'll ask about the other stuff later. I would like to say I was very happy to see the counters. I think as garages get bigger, people are more likely to get lost and confused. I'm definitely one of those people. It's like the Seinfeld episode. So the counters, I think, will be a welcome improvement to the community.
Okay. Let's see, I've got council member banana.
Yeah, a couple of things. The the status boards also great idea. I'm glad we're being able to implement those. Is there consideration of a of an app people could have that would show the status of those boards so that people, before they head to one place or another to park, they might be able to know whether there are spots available? That's my first question.
We haven't looked into that yet. You know, we talked about trying to have a sign somewhere on Livermore Avenue in the future, you know, with garage availability. But I imagine we'll talk to our technology consultant on the garage about that. And see, see if he's got some ideas for the future.
Okay, yeah, I think these things have been implemented elsewhere and I think it's fairly straightforward technology, but sometimes it seems simple and it's not, but thank you for that. But I would just put that in as least looking into it. So thank you. So next thing is the pedestrian crossings. Is anything good? You didn't mention anything about signals, any new signals or changing of signaling? And is there going to be any change in the pedestrian crossings from either the existing garage or or the new extension? And then I have one more after that.
Yeah, so with the existing garage, we're gonna do some signal timing modifications. And create some, separate some of the movements to improve safety coming out of the existing garage. So that that signal, the timing on it will be modified. There's some work, there's going to be some work separately on a separate project to extend the turn pocket into the existing garage because right now it's undersized. But those would be the those would be the nearby roadway improvements.
So if someone was coming out of the I Street Extension, would they just walk east and connect with the crossing? And that's coming out of the main garage?
Well, they'd have options. They they could come out onto I Street and and walk down, you know, along the existing parking garage and get out that way. They could also, there'll be a pedestrian crossing into the existing garage. They could also, there'll be a pedestrian crossing into the existing garage. And then the nice thing is this will give them the option also to take that stairwell at the southwest corner and get over to Railroad and North Livermore. So they'll have a couple of different options.
Okay, so you're going to make it sort of an integrated system that maybe optimizes things. And as you said, kind of changes the timing and that that pocket would be expanding that pocket would be great. The last thing I want to mention or ask is, are we? Are we? There was no mention of how this is going to be funded, whether it's going to be from cash on hand or debt funded. I don't even know if that's something that's appropriate to bring up for this item. Are we just approving the garage? Or there was no mention of how it's going to be funded is? Someone just comment whether that's something we're even?
Well, the the funding is, you know, predominantly general funds that are available. And then there's going to be some sewer funds for the sewer replacement in the I Street would be a gas tax, the recent re configuration of I Street, but predominantly will be general funds.
So Councilmember Banano, Mark Roberts, your city manager. The bulk of the general funds will be from cash on hand. And part of that is is you you are approving tonight the part of the budget that's between now and June thirtieth of this year. And then with your next capital improvement program, you'll be approving the remainder of the construction. Tonight, you are approving the entire construction contract, but the funding will happen in two parts. The staff report includes the information for the entire price of the project. We expect expect the bulk of this to be paid for by cash on hand. Near the later phases of the construction project, there could be some minor interim internal borrowing necessary. It really does depend on how quickly the economy comes back. But in either case, we do have a plan to finance the entire garage.
Great. Okay, that's what I needed. Thank you. That's it.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Okay, so I had two questions. One is just when I go into the existing garage right now, it is, if I'm remembering correctly, in most places, one directional, a unidirectional. And this is not in most places. And I'm just wondering about the reasoning for that. And is there? It takes more space to have it going to have traffic going both directions. Is there a way to save space by making it unidirectional? I assume not, or that would have happened. But I'm wondering if there could be an explanation for that. And then I'm also quite concerned about the fact that there's twelve charging stations when we have growing numbers of electric vehicles. That just doesn't seem to be sufficient. So I'm wondering if there's a way to increase that number. So those would be my two questions.
Yeah, the it's interesting. The first question is really a geometry issue. So we were, you know, building on a city parcel there predominantly. And then you're looking at the optimum width and in the number of spaces. So the best geometry for us was to have the the two way and the in the parallel. The other geometry with the one way is good for the slanted spaces, the diagonal spaces. But for this geometry and the property shape, we're able to fit the most spaces having the two way. The two way drive aisle in the in the perpendicular spaces. So that was, yeah, that was kind of a it's kind of a puzzle on these garages.
That's really cool. Thank you for explaining that. Okay, and continue.
Yeah, and then for the EV charging stations, we're coming off the power in the existing garage. So we are, that's how many we could get in. And it also is a code requirement to have a minimum. We're looking in the downtown at, you know, other locations to increase EV chargers in the in the other garage and some other locations. So we're, you know, we're actively looking at trying to implement more EV chargers in the downtown. For this garage, it worked out best that number to 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 maximize the amount of power we're drawing out of the existing garage.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Kick.
So I know that there's no such thing as extra money. But fifteen, it was about fifteen million budgeted for this. If it's approved, we're approving about thirteen point five million, even if there's the ten percent wiggle room. Have we thought about where the excess previously budgeted funds would go?
Honorable Councilmember Kick, the the entire price includes both the construction contract that you're proving tonight for about thirteen and a quarter million. Your change order allowance, which is approximately a million dollars. We have construction management materials testing that's necessary for about four hundred thousand. Design consultants support during construction for another four hundred thousand. We've got permit fees, Cal water fees, railroad inspection and permit fees. The city staff, project management and right of way title purchase for the right of entries. And all of those things together are about fifteen point nine million. So while the construction piece is the biggest piece by far of that, there are a number of other costs that go along with the overall budget. And so this is coming in just a hair above our original estimates on that. So actually, very, very close. So we're pleased. But as you noted, we actually are pretty close to where we originally thought we were going to be.
Okay, so there is no, yes, there is no such thing as extra money. I'm just checking.
Okay, I've got a couple of comments. I'll just with that extra money thought, I thought you'd, Mark, you'd say the L Street garage, if there was any, that's where it would go. But anyway, there are a couple of things. I also would suggest very strongly what Councilmember Banano brought up about the app. And that I think we absolutely need to make sure that the number of spaces are available on your phone so that you're not driving into the garage to read the sign or even into the downtown to see the sign. I think in this day and age, there's it's just a requirement that we would build it. And that when we do it, it's not just the number of spaces, but since we've had the other conversation with respect to how many of what kind of space. And we will know which space is empty and which one isn't, and we'll also know what it's it's with this. So I would say we have that kind of information there. And if you looked at the signs that were shown in the garage, that's too much information for those signs. But it's perfect kind of information for an app on your phone that you could pick up and you're, you know, and your thing. So I would I would say that that's just, we need to do it well. With respect to the charging stations, so you're pulling the power out of the existing garage, but you're there's no other way to bring in more power. I guess, and that there wouldn't make sense to put in the the right conduit from another direction? Or what's the situation there?
Your most cost effective manner, if your direction is to sort of maximize our electric spaces downtown, probably our most cost effective way would be to to put this in a few other locations, primarily in L Street, where we'll be pulling power from the the grid originally, going back and doing another meter and another cut in would be a relatively expensive way to to provide them in this location. So we're trying to ultimately, as your staff distribute your electric vehicle charging throughout the downtown. And so we certainly, if we have any other opportunities that are cost effective in this location, we'd want to do that. But we do have the L Street garage. We also have some surface parking lot areas where we're that actually will probably be the first charging that comes online, the the parking lot immediately adjacent to the rear part of Ale House. As well as some other city owned lots, we'll take a look at that as well. But
Any any thought on solar panels on this? Was that looked at and decided against or what?
The issue there is, again, it's just down to cost simply because of sort of the the combination of solar panel plus battery is an option, and they do have some of those units that can be placed, for example, on a top deck. And we might take a look at that for grant funding, but those are generally not the most cost effective per space. So we were sort of trying to balance two things here, which was the number of spaces and the cost effectiveness. And then sort of have our overall direction be to try to maximize the charging throughout downtown on a cost effective basis.
Is there any kind of, you know, preparation or allowing for an easy retrofit of the solar panels if you got the grant funding? I mean, anything to do in the construction that would make it easier to enable if that was ultimately a decision at some time in the future?
So as far as the construction on this project, and we are laying in the conduit there and looking for partners to actually do the charging stations, we'll be doing that throughout our other issues. But let us take a look sort of both in this project and throughout the downtown for some opportunities. Because some providers actually have almost fully contained systems where if you can handle the weight, you can you can park the item. They're generally more expensive than if you do have power available. So let us do a little analysis on that.
Are you talking about stations or solar panels? I was talking about solar panels. So she retrofit the you know, so at the top structure, you could easily put them in and run the wiring wherever you needed to just just enable it in case you ever we ever wanted to put solar panels on it.
Yes, and in fact, you will have noticeable power. And so we'll make sure we're conduiting for that because since you have power at your elevator area in the garage. So absolutely, we'll take a look at that.
Okay, it's it's the power not in, but it's kind of like out in that case. But the and then the other thing that I wanted, if we could go back to the diagram showing the garage entrance from railroad for a moment.
Marie, can you reshare your screen?
All right, just one moment.
One of the first screen slides. Let's see, it's the next one after that. I mean, it's there. Okay, here. I, yeah, this is it. See, the this has always been awkward to have the people that want to make a left turn. They're heading east on railroad. They want to make a left turn into the existing structure. And you stack up on the west side of the crosswalk. And so what we always got is we got to get the stacked cars across the crosswalk and then left turn across the traffic into the garage. And I would have hoped that we could have made the left turn if you're going east on railroad onto I Street. And then you don't have the crossing of the crosswalk. Now, I think the problem is that that thing is not long enough to stack the cars. But my consideration here is it's got to be long because when you've got to wait, you got to stack those cars in order to have them get a time to cross the crosswalk and then make the left turn across the traffic. Then if you just made the left turn into I Street right away and you timed the light so that the crosswalk was going when you're making your left turn, that you kind of make it happen. But I guess you've looked at it pretty carefully in the traffic engineering and you just can't get a left turn directly into I Street.
So honorable mayor, we actually did look at that very scenario along with about a half a dozen other ones which essentially limited the right in, right out, moved the left hand turn in, changed signal timing on this. And and so they after running a bunch of different scenarios, the one that turned out to be the the most efficient for both pedestrians, you know, and the vehicles was to have the right in, right out on I Street. And what we what the model shows is that 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 will actually take a noticeable number of folks who want to turn right onto Railroad Avenue. They'll divert to that because they won't be controlled by the signaling longer. They'll be able to make a free right in a lot of in a lot of the signal phasing coming in and out of the parking structure. And then to allow a separate pedestrian phase that's lengthened and then a left hand turn phase, which is not in conflict with the pedestrian phase. So by having the two entrances and by able to being able to adjust the phasing of the pedestrian cycle there, we ultimately were able to deal with both the auto traffic, you know, and the pedestrian traffic more efficient. But one of the items we did take a look at was both turning into I Street and then a really fancy one of turning into both I Street and the parking garage. And what you have before you and the extension of that left hand turn lane. So one of the things going to happen is that left end turn lane you see on that diagram will be extended all the way back to Livermore Avenue. And the road will be widened in that area to create the space for that additional lane. That's part of your right of way that's in the in the estimates you have. So out of all those different alternatives, the the folks whose job it is to sort of run the models and and take a look at all the analysis came up with this one for us.
Oh, okay. So you are going to extend the left turn lane to Livermore Avenue. So
Yes.
So if you did that, I still don't, I mean, I, you know, I trust what you did, but I would have thought that with that extension, you would have had enough stacking distance to make the left turn right into I and not have to cross the crosswalk. But it's interesting that you did looked at all those scenarios. So one other question, going back to the financing and what council members Kick and Banana were talking about, I believe. Or maybe it was Vice Mayor Monroe. Again, remember who was asking about the financing, I guess. But the the thing is, this garage has been in our plans for a long time as well as the L Street garage. And, you know, we've been saving for it. And that this one will come out of the cash. But when we get to the L Street garage, that's when we'll have to consider the debt financing. And so the way I would phrase the question is can we, with given our, you know, the pandemic situation and everything else that we're looking at? Do we conclude at this point that it's prudent to do the I Street garage, knowing that in order to complete the housing element, that we absolutely need to build the L Street garage as well? So we're really, in this decision with our other plans, saying we're going to build both garages within our existing, you know, financial framework. And the bottom line question is, is it prudent to now at this point, build the I Street garage?
So honorable mayor, you will recall, and you did say that this this garage and the L Street garage have been in our plans now for a number of years. And in fact, I Street was well along to being getting ready to issue a bid about a year ago. And at that point, as we first started the pandemic, your staff in an abundance of caution pushed the timing out about a year so we could get a good look and to see how deep the recession was and what the recovery would begin to look like. With that data, as far as what the financial impact is, we do now know, we have a pretty good idea of what the bottom of that recession was and where we are in the recovery. So you are correct, this is the first of two garages, and this one is would be financed mainly with cash on hand. The L Street garage would be mainly a debt financed garage, and that was always the plan to do that. Your staff have been looking at the scenarios over a couple of different possibilities for the speed of the recovery. There's pretty broad agreement. There is going to be an economic recovery. And there's a little bit of variability about whether it's going to be extraordinarily fast or moderately fast. It does not appear to be as a slower recovery as we saw out of the housing recession. And so with all of that analysis, we took a look at the the bottom line answer is, yes, we believe it is prudent to move forward with the I Street garage at this point. We do believe that we will have the financial capacity to move forward with L Street. However, the commitment to these two projects will take up most of your available discretionary spending for a period of time. So we did, we do want you to be aware that there would not be essentially the ability to do other large scale, multi-year projects in addition to these. But those two projects, we do have the financial capacity to make happen on the timeline that we're proposing.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I would move approval.
Tekan.
Okay, moved and seconded by Councilmember Banano and Councilmember Carling. Any further discussion? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. That passes unanimously and
I did actually have my hand up, but it went up as the roll call was being called. Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Thank you.
As long as it's about the garage.
Well, it is, as a matter of fact. I I just wanted, I was thinking about the cost of this, and it's clearly something that is in the plan. It's needed in our current situation. It's a lot of money to spend on where we put our cars. And again, I just want to come back to how much it costs for parking space and what we're not spending that money on. I voted for it. I would vote for it again. But I just want to keep in mind that we are, we we put our, our, we, our money is what our values are. And so we, as a city, are making a decision that our values are, we house our cars when we go downtown.
Okay, so we're on to item seven, the council committee reports and matters initiated. And I'll just start this section with respect to the AJ Bike Service. And then we'll go through our normal routine, if I may. So here's what I've got to say, you know, in in light of the comments in the citizens forum relating to AJ's bike service, I'd like to initiate a review of our home occupancy permit requirements. I believe it has been several decades since they were last updated, and times have certainly changed since then. And for example, some limited amount of customer contact may be okay. I think we heard in the public forum numerous neighbors saying that they thought it was fine. We do have, though, acknowledged that there are objections, and that's how this came about in the first place. So what I would like to do is suggest that staff do a comprehensive look at our current rules and come back with a staff report for our consideration at a public meeting. So before I ask for a head nods, I'd like to ask city manager, would you care to comment? And what is a feasible timeframe for you to come back with such a review?
So taking a look at our home occupation regulations, we could return to you either the second meeting in April with our findings on that or the first meeting in May.
Okay, and can I see a head nods from the council? Is it okay, it looks like we've got an agreement to do that.
Can I ask a question, though?
Sure.
So as I understand it, that when we're considering something like this, and I'm I'm all for looking into this ordinance, we hold in abeyance any enforcement.
Oh, can I, can I go there next then? That's the next part.
I just want to know what, what, what the, what is being held in abeyance. That's what I want.
Okay, so we haven't gotten there yet. So let me, let me do that. So given that we've agreed to have this looked at and reviewed, and that there's a chance that some of the rules may be adjusted, I'd like to ask the city manager, what has been our past practice in such a situation?
In situations where an item has been appealed or where the city council has initiated a potential change in regulations, the past practice has been to hold the enforcement of those particular regulations in abeyance. In in this particular case, it is a permit has been issued to the business. So and the one item that I understand is the item of contention is whether customers could visit the site in limited numbers as a part of the business. Your current regulations don't permit that in this case. My understanding is you've asked us to do a review of our regulations to determine if some limited amount of customer contact might be appropriate in cases like
I think that among, I mean, I think what we want to do is what I was asking for is really a comprehensive review. The customer contact is one of them. But I think there's some other aspects, having read the rules, that need need to be revisited. So I think what I'm hearing, and given the Councilmember Carling's question as well, is that, you know, we heard tonight that about a maximum of a half, half a dozen customer visits per day would be adequate to allow the business to operate. And the question is, to you, city manager, would it be possible for you to consider allowing that level of activity until the review comes back to council for a public, a public comment and deliberation?
So that that level of holding enforcement in advance would be consistent with our past practice. So to be clear, all of the rest of the conditions of the permit that has been issued would generally remain in force. That customer contact similar to what has been going on, which is somewhere between half a dozen and 10 visits a day, could be allowed pending the council's review, comprehensive review of the home occupation permit regulations, and then ultimately a decision after a hearing. After that decision, we would then contact the business and and move forward with whatever the regulations were at that particular point.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Carling. Is that what you were looking for? Go ahead.
Yes, the other thing that he mentioned was operational hours from nine to four, is that also, is that what's in the home occupation permit at this point?
Mr. Spence, you're going to have to give me a hand in actually reading the regulations of this particular permit. Generally, we do have limitations on hours on that one. I don't know whether
The reason I'm asking is some of the complaints are that they that it's really pretty early in the morning, much earlier than nine AM. And I heard Mr. Wright talk about operational hours nine to four, and I just wanted to know if that was what was in the permit.
We don't generally have limits on operational hours because the business is supposed to operate in such a way that it's not noticeable. So we don't allow customers to visit the site under the current conditions, so we don't really have operational hours. But we could add them for this interim period if the council so directed.
I would, if I could at this point, I think you should. But do it based on the consultation with Mr. Wright. But we, you know, you know, when you think about it, if people are going to do construction and other things, it's much earlier, and that's highly disruptive. So I don't know what the right time is, but you would think, you know, eight to five, that's kind of like normal business hours, but work it out. Councilmember Carling, do you have a, do you care much what the hours are?
No, except Mr. Wright said nine to four, and if that's, I mean, I'm, I'm if that's what he's operating now, then I don't see any reason why we should change it from what he said. That's all.
Before the city attorney gets at us, I think we've, we've had as much discussion on this as we can at this point. And do you have sufficient direction on this?
Yes. Thank you, staff. Sufficient direction on both the customers and the the discussion around hours. We did hear some testimony this evening that will circle back with the applicant on this one. Obviously, our objective here is to sort of have the situation remain stable until you're able to consider any potential changes you wanted to, and that's how we'll move forward.
Okay, well, thank you. And then with that, we'll now move into the regular rotation for the agenda item seven. I think we start with Councilmember Kick.
Yeah, so the first thing I'm going to talk about in report outs is how we do report outs. So I've been talking with the communication sub, sub lead, Vice Mayor Monroe, and we are figuring out a process. And and when we started doing this, it wasn't just about how do we report out in a way that's easy for us as council members, but how do we report out in a way that's useful for the community? We can talk all we want, but it doesn't really make a difference to our communication and relationship with the community if it's not useful. So I got some feedback from some different community organizers about what would be useful to them. We have a form and a system that we would like to roll out to the rest of council for them to practice using until the next meeting where we can hopefully discuss, does the system work for you? Staff can give us, give us some feedback on, is the system easy to implement on our website? So if it's okay with the rest of council, we would like to have staff email you out this form. You would fill it out. It's pretty easy. You just, you choose your name, you know your name, you choose the committee and enter the meeting date. And then in each section, it tells you pretty clearly, here's where you put the summary, here's where you put something like, I must know council's choice on what Livermore's favorite color is by March 10th. And so then we can be very clear on what we actually need direction from and what are things that are just informational for us. So I would like to get that to everybody this week for you to practice using, for it to come back to council next time. Does that, do I have approval from everybody else that that sounds good? Okay, and then the things that I did that I'm going to report out on were the Tri Valley. When was our last meeting? The eighth, right? Okay, you know what day it is. So I went to the rail authority, they're considering an anti discrimination policy. I think it's important that that we have those, and they were directed to go back to have some broader protections for all groups, including gender identity and sexual orientation. We also at the Livermore Amador Valley Transit Authority, wrong one, at the East Bay Community Energy Joint Powers Authority, we are proposing that JPA members, which would be us, Livermore, if we ever wanted to change our baseline product for East Bay Community Energy, that we could change it one time at no cost to us. But if we keep changing our minds about what we want our baseline policy to be as we provide energy to our community, it would be on us to cover the cost of the two legally required notices to customers. So we have not changed ours at any time, so even if we did decide to change it, it would be free for the first time, and it gets to prevent people from constantly changing because that is a cost. So that will be coming soon for a vote, and they are proposing to change the net energy metering policy so that we are paying the same amount PG&E is to solar customers. Right now, East Bay Community Energy pays a one cent premium to people that have solar on their homes. But most people aren't taking advantage of the program. And so they're just going to try and match PG&E and focus on some other programs that might be a better use of staff time. So those are the two things that I could take potential feedback on from, from what I
I don't think you can take that on, you can check in with the attorney. I don't think you can take feedback from us on that kind of stuff, but it does sound to me that those kind of decisions have to come back to the council for deliberation. But that's my impression, but it's good the city attorney, yes.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. Yes, items like that for discussion and direction to the committee member would be an appropriate item for a future agenda. So if you'd like to counter that, that can return at a, either the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Okay, so I think that's what your council member Kick, you're really initiating as a agenda item for us.
Well, sure, and I did want to ask a little bit because we've talked about what what do report outs mean and what do we really need to get feedback on? And so is that the best way for us necessarily?
I think, and again, it's, you know, we're all kind of getting familiar with what we can and can't do under the Brown Act. But at this point, it's to, for you to inform us what the issues are. And then if you want a decision by us, any which would require a discussion and deliberation by our part, we have to agendize it. So I think what the way this goes, I think that's what the city attorney just said is, you tell us what the issues are. And then in order to get our response and input on it, we have to agendize it in a public hearing. Meeting, so that's how we're going to do it. So you that's that, did I say that correctly, city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, yes, you did.
Okay, so we'll take it as you, I think we all agree that this is something that needs to be agendized. And we'll do it.
And so does, would the agenda item be policy changes at EBCE, or would they each be there separate?
No, you could do it that way, and just cover everything.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I went on TV 30 with you. But I think that's, that's about it for official report outs.
Okay, all right. And then Councilmember Carling.
Thanks. On the 11th, stop, I had a stop waste meeting. On the 16th, with Vice Mayor Monroe chaired the E and I workshop for the, for the new applicants. And we had, I think, 15 new folks joining us that evening, and they'll be integrated with the larger body tomorrow evening at the next workshop on E and I. We, I think there's probably some youth that weren't available to join us last week that may be able to join us tomorrow, so we'll remain to be seen if that's true. And then on the 17th, attended the Livermore Amador Water Management Agency meeting with the mayor and Councilmember Banano, this is an agendized meeting, so three of us were there. I, the mayor, current Mr. Warner, is stepping down and as a delegate, so I will be taking his place at the next meeting. These meetings are held quarterly. And we usually have two delegates there, so I'll be joining Councilmember Banano as the, as the delegates for that moving forward. So it was an opportunity for me to participate in the meeting, learn about what this group does and get introduced to the other board members. Turns out there's several new board members actually coming up for the next couple of years. So it was an interesting meeting and we'll learn more about water. If I have questions, I know who to ask. So thank you.
That's Mayor Marshawn.
Yes, yes, that's right, yes.
Okay, I think, Councilmember Banano, you're next.
All right, I'm going to be crisp and concise, how about that? So Livermore Downtown Inc., we had their board, monthly board meeting on the 16th. What I'll mention there is they have a plan to bring back their part-time staff and also to bring their executive director back up to full time, which I thought was worth conveying to everyone here. I think there was a general sense of optimism in the, in the meeting, not in the room, but in the meeting with respect to some of the business owners, and people were feeling like, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel is a real light. And that I think they're, they're feeling confident enough to bring back some of their staff, so I thought that was very good news. Also, just generally planning for events in the springtime, which all sounded very good. The Labna meeting that Councilmember Carling just mentioned, I've thought that was a really interesting meeting. I thought it's going to be a really cool system to start to understand. The only thing I'll mention there is that, I guess, Labma has a 20-year master agreement with the East Bay Dischargers Authority. They're the, they're the entity that actually conveys the water to, into the bay. And they have just approved after some negotiations of another 20-year agreement. So those are long-term agreements, and that sounded like it was quite a bit of work, but is in place. Then I attended the intergovernmental agencies meeting. I won't go through everything. That was quite an interesting meeting as well. Discuss the hopefully opening schools in the late March timeframe, all grades, which is not what all school systems are doing. So I thought that was quite, quite good, that we're going to get all our students back, hopefully in the late March timeframe. Another thing I'll mention is Las Bocitas College also participates in that meeting. And the president, Daryl Foster, was there, and he said that they're going to continue with online learning through the summer and hoping to go 25 to 50% in person this coming fall. So to give you an idea of what the college is planning, at the moment, that's their baseline. And I think I will wrap it up there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Monroe?
Well, then I will pick, well, I, I will pick right up where council member Banano left off with Intergov. That was, I was at the same meeting. A couple of other items. I just wanted to note that. In the three intergovernmental agencies, city, school, and LARPD. And, and, and for actually for all of these, Las Bocedas. Put together two major grants that, one of which is, is to look at. A model for taking at-risk youth up to age 24 and giving them a trade. There's an academic piece and apprenticeship. We have a good shot of getting it because we have a good plan going forward. And then a second application was put in. That is for an All-America City application, looking at issues of health, equity and social justice and housing homelessness. And I, I think these are worth pointing out just because of the amount of work. This is, this is where we get some of our money and it's where we put some of our staff time. The idea that we have our staff working together to make this happen is worth noting. So I want to note, note that. The other thing that we're looking at is. School, school board member Christie Wong and I talked some about the encouraging. Less traffic and more biking as an intergovernmental issue project. And so we're gonna be working on that going forward. Bring you more information as that goes, as that goes on. But this is just, it's better for the environment, it's better for health, better for safety, all of those things. And so finding ways to work together to make that happen on a regular basis is, is something that we'll, we'll be putting in place. I, on the, wait a minute, wrong page. There we go. On the, so that was on the 16th, also on the 16th. As Councilmember Carling said, was the introductory meeting of Equity and Inclusion, the, the new members. Back, backing up to January 12th, attended Innovation Tri-Valley meeting. At which there was presentations on mental health issues and their effects. It's interesting to note that as we move forward. This year has really brought out. Changes not only in, in physical health, but also in mental health. And so again, going forward. I think we're gonna be seeing some. More attention paid to that issue, not just in business area, but in the. What, what, what the health organizations are offering. I'm trying to, I, I know some of this has been offered up, but I, I'm gonna just. I know there's an announcement coming and I'm gonna let the organization do the announcement, just putting out that it's about to happen. A couple of other things I want to note. I wanted to go back to the AJ's Bike Shop for a moment, not with regard to any of the. Decisions that were made, but just the process. I was a little bit disappointed. That nobody contacted the city until there was a petition, rather, nobody contacted city council members until there was a petition. Or at least nobody contacted me until after the petition was already underway. It's, this is really an interesting issue to look at. I'm really glad it's come up and I'm really impressed to have found out so much about. A particular, you know, this particular shop and this, and AJ. But golly, I really wish it could have happened without this much drama. I'm not sure it was necessary. Since I think we're all trying to work for the same goals here. So let's just, you know, next time, guys, come talk to us first, please. That's what we're here for. I also wanted to notice that this past week, we've had an amazing thing happen as a country. That really deserves celebrating. We landed. Perseverance on Mars with pictures that are astonishing. If you have not seen these, please go out and look at it. It will make you happy. Very happy. Not something that's happening in Livermore, except that we're part of everything that this country is doing and this is a really good thing that we've done. As we come up on the one-year anniversary, I think it's, what I'd like to do is propose that we as a council. Note it in some written form or in some way. This has been a heck of a year. We've made it through it. As you've heard, we're on the upswing, although there's still plenty of downswing that we're still working our way through. And I would like to propose that we find a way as a council to sort of take note of that. Can I get some head nods on that or?
I think I'll appoint you to write a letter on our behalf.
Okay, but do I need head nods or you're just gonna do it?
Let's have head nods, but I think that's the, what we do.
Okay.
I think it would be nice to, to maybe. Say what, what we've been able to accomplish considering how crappy of a year it has been for a lot of people. So if you would like to write that, I am happy to sign it.
I'll do my best.
And we'll work with staff and we'll get something. Anything else?
Yes, I have one more item I'd like to bring back to council. So in this coming year, we, we have the, with the census complete. We have. The opportunity, we have a whole lot of redistricting that's gonna take place, including at the county level. We're gonna, we, we, the supervisory districts will be redistricted. I would like to propose that currently there are groups underway asking for not just check the box. Approach to this, but that we have a very active. Proposal gathering data from. Many different groups so that it sounds like, in the words that. That we have transparent redistricting process with robust public outreach. So that we have districts that provide fair representation for communities in the county. And if you look at the way the Tri Valley is divided, you can argue that it's, it's interesting.
So if you could, can you, I, I think you're doing a matters initiated that you.
I am, yes. I'd like to bring it back.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So I'm good with that.
Right. Can I get head nods on that?
Okay.
Right. All right. Thank you. And I believe that's it.
Okay, for myself, what I tried to do is because I'd mentioned it and I wanted us to start writing down our. Committee reports so that we could begin to be efficient on this. And so I filled out the template that the city clerk put out for us. And I noticed that Councilmember Banano also did that. She did it, Councilmember Banano did it in a better bullet format over on the notes. But I wanted to say that what I saw, what I tried myself to do and what Councilmember Banano did. Is something that's succinct and informative. And that what we would, and I like the other suggestion of add what. Coming decisions that we need to add to the column for that. But anyway, that material was in the supplemental packet, so take a look at that. And if you had, had taken a chance to look at it, I would then just highlight a couple of items. One, mentioned the Alameda County Homeless Working Group. It's an ad hoc group of mayors. And some others. And I've been pushing that it become a formal part of the Alameda County Mayor's Conference. I think that might happen. And the other thing that I would like to point out is that this morning I asked for a meeting of the. Our Tri Valley City mayors as well as some council, a mayor in San Ramon and a council member from Danville. To meet with the chairman of Gillig. And we had some consultants there and the left staff as well as the. Counterpart in the, the county connection in Clutchacosta. And the whole idea is should, where is, where are hydrogen buses in the scheme of things? And was there enough energy in that room? Although all those people to begin to apply for federal and state grants to pursue it. And the bottom line was, yeah, then we'll go to the next step. But people were. Happy that I actually convened that group of people so that we could put that. In the mix of our climate action plans. It's also consistent with some of the stuff I've been doing on. ACTC as well. So that, that's, that's got some potential and it'd be really cool if we got some grants. But when I went to the. I attended the US Conference of Mayors, both. Buttigieg and John Kerry mentioned hydrogen a couple of times. So I think it's got a potential. And I also understand that someone's looking to put a site here in Livermore for a big fueling station. So. That's what's going on. But that's, that's how I would think we would do these report outs, just highlight a couple. And the rest is in the, and we can read it. The suggestion. So with that. Begin the. Getting to adjournment. And as we come to the close of February. It's the end of the Black History Month as well. And I want to acknowledge the exceptional work, the library staff and. Community members have done in highlighting significant events in history and the people in our community. And the library's YouTube channel has past events, including tonight's poetry. And the month concludes with a February 24th community viewing of the film Push Out. And you can sign up for that on the library website. It's a documentary. And with that in mind, I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Black History Month. To our next meeting to be held virtually via Zoom at, on March 1st, at nine AM. And that'll be a special city council workshop. So with that, we're adjourned.